Recording in progress. Sportsman School Board meeting. We welcome everyone. We would like to take a minute to welcome new members. Tish Campbell. And then we have Lee Hudson. And we have Byron Mado.
Mado.
Mado, okay. And I want to re-welcome our existing members. Liz Barrett. Pip Cluse. Brian French. Kerry Nolte. And Lisa Rappaport. So, welcome back, everyone. We have a new board. We're excited about the enthusiasm and the interest that seems to be here now. So we'll hopefully have a good two-year span. I want to welcome Brian French as our vice chair. Brian will be our vice chair now, and I will continue as the chair. So I'm very excited about that, and I know you are too. So, so welcome, everyone. Okay, let's move on. Nathan, roll call. Or Patty, Patty, roll call, sorry.
Thanks. Liz Barrett.
Here.
Tish Campbell.
Here.
Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Brian French.
Here.
Lee Hudson.
Here.
Brian Mado.
Here.
Kerry Nolte.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Here.
Danielle Miles.
Nathan Delaney.
Here.
Okay, can we stand and do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I should have introduced our superintendent, Zach McLaughlin, who's here with us for his second year. Well, year and a half he's been with us. Patty Haynes is our assistant superintendent. And Nathan, can you wave your hand? Nathan is our business administrator. So, oh, and our student representative at the end of the table here, Nathan. Nathan, what year are you in now?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore, okay. So Nathan gives a great perspective to us of what the students in the district think. So it's great to have a student representative. And our teacher representative is not here tonight, Danielle Miles. And we often have an SAU 50 representative sitting at the table with us. That's someone from Greenland, Ryan Newington, Newcastle. So tonight, obviously, they couldn't be here. But we often have that person. Okay, next on the agenda is announcements and recognitions.
I've got a few. On the announcement side, I just, people will have noticed, and I put out video to, on this, over the weekend, that we are moving, at this point, we've been working on building up the new Facebook page and moving away from the old Facebook page. The new Facebook page is facebook.com/portsmithsd. We've been, the social media team has started to populate that over the course of the last month. As the board will recall, we're doing this in order to basically be able to be in a better position to coordinate our social media efforts and to track our data as we, as we put out information. So just another announcement for folks on that. And then a couple of recognitions. I really want to thank our facilities, maintenance, and custodial department for all their work over the weekend. As we went from, you know, Saturday night into Sunday, into Sunday night, as I kind of occasionally, well, they were all out working hard. I would occasionally kind of zip through and do the rounds. And I just really appreciate people putting in their, you know, their full Sundays in the cold to try to put us in the best possible position to, to open up. And when I went around to a person, you know, they were upbeat. They, some of them are bashful. I was trying to get some pictures for social media, and they were like, why don't we take a picture of my truck? And, but, but I really appreciate all the work that was done. In addition, I also want to thank our public works department. You know, I know people, you know, we had people working in for like 20, almost like 24-hour shifts, like they're working, sleeping, getting back on over what was a really, really difficult storm. And I just want to thank all the people in DPW for their efforts. And then finally, just recognitions, you know, I want to, similar to Nancy, welcome all the, all the new board members. And want to thank the city for putting on, that was my first opportunity to go to an inaugural event. And real testament to the importance and clout of Portsmouth and the state of New Hampshire to have a good chunk of the congressional delegation present, to have a really good turnout of family, and to be in a position where people, what I love about this community is we're constantly in, we're thinking big picture all the time. And it's great to be in a community where we have the ability to think that large and to be in a room where that was happening in a whole bunch of different phases. I really appreciate. And last but not least, congratulations to our, to our new board leadership, and I look forward to the upcoming year. So, thank you.
Does anyone else have a announcement? Nathan, back at school is going well?
It's great.
That's good to hear. Okay, okay, next on the agenda, the consent agenda has one item, and that's the approval of the December 12th, 2023 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of that meeting?
Motion.
Second, Kerry. Second, Pip. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain, I was in there.
Okay, one abstention, yes. Okay, now we are into our public comment session. The public comment session, each person has three minutes to speak. If you would please come forward, state your name and address, and we will have you speak. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment session? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
We have one person, but the hand is not raised.
Okay, thank you, Matt, Toby. I guess the public comment session is closed. Did you want to speak back there? No? Okay, okay. The public comment session is closed. Okay, I will hand the, the meeting over to Nathan Looney, who is going to talk about our budget.
Well, actually, we'll introduce some visitors so they can, they can help frame some conversation for us.
Oh, I see.
And then give them an opportunity to head off to other things. A year ago, when we started the conversation around budget, one of the items that we discussed with you was talking about our budget as part of the city budget. And, and that when we came to talk to you about how we were framing our thought process as a leadership team, that was informed by conversations with the city manager and her team. And so we summarized what those conversations were. What I really appreciate is that city manager Karen Canard came this year and said, I'd really like to talk to the board for a little bit as you get into your budget season. So I'm excited to have Karen join us and give her a little bit of time to talk to you about kind of her vision for, for our process and the city process in general this season.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the school board. Thank you, Zach. And it's been a pleasure to work with Zach and Nathan. They've been nothing but team players. And I think what I wanted to do tonight is to recognize to you that this is my fifth budget. And I'm joined by my colleague Judy Belanger, who's our finance director. And this is not her fifth budget. This is probably her 20-something, 25th budget. And we're doing something we haven't done before, which is come to the school board, the fire commission, and the police commission. And in fact, we were at the fire commission about an hour ago. And we, we'd like the opportunity to bring you into the fold as early as we can, to hammer home the point that Zach made so eloquently that I don't even have to make it, I just have to reinforce it, which is, we're all part of a team. We're all part of one budget. This is a collective effort. And to the extent we can work in that vein, it will be as successful as we can be. So to take you back to FY '20 and FY '21, I dread to use the pandemic word, but we all were hit with, and then we reacted conservatively to, and, and as a result, literally climbed successfully out of the COVID years. But you will remember that we slashed capital, we delayed rolling stock, we changed a lot of the ways we behaved in our budget, which was part of our longstanding policies. And with the support of this current council, which is the council we just had previously, we were able to use the last two budgets to rebuild, to return to our, to following those longstanding fiscal policies to support those long-term funding plans. We also got a chance to add much-needed salary adjustments for recruitment and retention across the board, really. And, and many of the departments have benefited from that already. But to sum it up, there was an aggressive spend to cover some delayed needs. And I think the message now is the aggressive spend needs to be curbed. Things are different this year. We need to pull back. We have inflation, we have cost increases, and we have unknowns. Some are specific to, to the school needs, some are more global and, and city-wide, organization-wide, that remain out of our control. And I know you've got some particular issues, you know, transportation out of district tuitions, equity among schools. We've talked with Nathan and Zach prior to coming here tonight. So we're not, they're, they aren't foreign to us. They're part of our collective thinking. So FY '25 is going to be challenging from a budgetary perspective. And if Judy and I were asked to pick a couple of words to describe how the budget's going to roll, it's going to be austere, and it's going to recognize efficiencies. So last year at this time, the consumer price index stood at 7%, and the 10-year rolling average was 2.55%. The 7% became 2.69. That's a big drop. Fortunately, what the 7% did was bump up the, the rolling average just a, just a hair. But the CPI for this past November to November is down to 2.4. So that's the benchmark, really. That's the, that's the number we're trying to hit. We've just started on the 25, FY '25 through FY '30 CIP process, which has a big impact on many things across the budget, most notably the non-operating budget, which showing an, an early increase, a preliminary increase of over 13%. So the directive I shared with, with the department heads right before Christmas, that was really jolly of me, was to tell all the department heads, we've got to stick as close to that rolling average figure of 2.69. And I recognize out of the gate, as does Judy, as does Zach and Nathan, that there are certain departments, including yours, that have a bigger COLA to factor in. A tiny bit of good news, the retirement rates will stay the same this budget cycle. The other thing we're factoring in this year that I'm sure you've heard much chatter about is the impact of the budget along with, and aside from the impact of the upcoming revaluation, which is slated to take place this year and for the first time in five years. So they're two different things, right? And they're mutually exclusive of one another. The budget is the tool that will drive the tax rate and is a direct reflection of the services we all value and provide. And the revaluation will have the effect of redistributing in a fair and equitable manner who pays what in taxes in recognition of what is deemed to be the fair market value, which we all know has increased dramatically over the last five years for residential and has actually declined for commercial property. So back to where we started. It would be the most helpful and yield the best product, in our opinion, to, to work cohesively as a team to keep this budget as manageable and as low as possible so that it impacts the tax rate as little as possible, which will then be factored in down the road. So all departments, not just school, have ownership in what we all present to the council. And simply put, I just need your help in recognizing this, this environment we're in right now. And the last thing I'll mention, and I'll ask Judy to see if I missed anything, is that the city council is holding their first budget preview work session on Wednesday, January 24th at 6:00 PM. And Judy and I will present some early findings. We will hear from the council either that night or at the next council formal meeting. We will hopefully get some guidance from the council that we can all take in and digest. But we appreciate the, the collaborativeness with which we have worked and would like to continue to work. So that's all I really wanted to address tonight. Anything else you want to add? Okay, well, we're a, we're a good team, Judy and me, and we work really well with Nathan and Zach. And we look forward to continuing to do that. Happy to answer any questions and also happy to leave you alone and have the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Karen. Does anybody have a question for Liz?
All right, so this might be an odd question, but I realize that this, this increase or lack thereof may result in the need to cut, or is going to result in a need to cut. And so I guess I'm wondering, and maybe this is a, I don't know, an odd question, but, you know, maybe this is something to consider if we can gain more information on, are there projects, you know, as we move forward with this budget process, are there projects, I'm just thinking, I don't know exactly what's coming up, but are there projects within the schools that could be bonded out, that could be pulled out of our budget, even some smaller projects, so that we can defer those costs and therefore maintain our budget the way it is?
Well, the short answer is what you have in your school budget is largely operating. And then, and to qualify for bond financing is a very specific set of rules. So what I credit the finance team in working with Nathan in doing is culling out what is bond-eligible versus what is not. So as a rule of thumb, what you use operationally would not be bond-eligible by and large. But it's certainly something we, we look at with everything. Do you want to add anything? Right, Nathan, I'm sure has some concrete examples of where you've been able to do that. And he's certainly your subject matter expert, and we rely on him a lot, and we pick his brain a lot. So I think that'll be part of his presentation tonight or coming attractions and then moving forward. But it's, it's certainly a question we run through our thought process all the time.
And I guess another question or sort of comment to be considered is that I feel like we've pulled some ESSR funds towards projects that may have, could have been in the CIP or could have been paid for by the city. And so I guess I'd hope going forward that maybe the city considers putting some of that money back into the schools, those ESSR funds that were used for bigger projects and whatnot, because we do need to keep our staff, I believe. You know, I'd be interested to see as we go forward what we're able to sort of cut back on. But I think we still have a need due to COVID and all of the ramifications that have come with COVID. So, and the social, emotional needs of our children and our community. So I really want our community to really consider how we've used those ESSR funds and, and, you know, if there's some grace that could be given there to the school department if an increase is needed.
I'll let Nathan speak to that.
It's a, it's a great question, and, and with my children, I would call this a teaching moment. So let me take just a quick teaching moment since we're headed into budget. Liz was referring to an important, an important item, the capital improvement plan, which is capital initiative that is initiative that is funded on the city side of the budget. It's a process that starts our budget back in the fall. We'll talk more about that later. We had a project envisioned in the Capital Improvement Plan that had the support of the city, and it was to replace windows at Don Darrow and repair windows at Little Harbor Elementary Schools. And ultimately, when we made the decision to move to the community campus with the support of the city and renovate the downstairs area that the Robert J. Lister Academy will be moving into this summer to prep for the start of the new school year, we had envisioned using some ESER funds for that purpose, and we instead traded with the city, and we were allowed to use all of that million and a half and another million eight, so 3.3 million collectively funded locally to renovate that space for Robert J. Lister. And our agreement was that we would push into ESER the $1.5 million of window replacement, because it was really consistent with the goals and expectations of the ESER funding, which was to prepare for, prevent, and respond to the pandemic and COVID conditions, et cetera. So, which is not to take away from the hope and prayer that there will be lots of grace offered to the school department as we contemplate what's coming in budget season, but just to clarify that, and so that if it comes up in conversation, new board members are aware. That's a project ongoing that we've reported out on this fall, but we'll report out on more as it heads towards completion in June. And it's being funded by the city. And our window project, which will happen this summer, is being funded by ESER.
Sorry, one more comment. Is there any, I know we briefly discussed it, but is there any consideration at this time, given our budget ramifications, that we could bond this 1.5 million? I know we had sort of talked about it, we approved this. I think, you know, you guys don't have to give me an answer tonight, but I think, I kind of wonder if that's something that we could bond, you know, move forward with bonding the windows versus using those ESER funds? Because, I mean, we have positions right now that are being funded by ESER, and they were in jeopardy of losing. And these ESER funds are really, you know, like, obviously, windows are necessary for, you know, airflow, but, I mean, our kids really need the social-emotional piece, the tutoring, and, you know, everything that goes into really trying to come back strong after learning loss. And so I don't need an answer tonight, but I guess I'm wondering if this is something that we can explore, and now is the time to sort of throw it out there, that this is something I've been thinking about, and I think I expressed it then. Obviously, I know bonds are probably, the interest rates are probably very high, just like everything else, but I guess I'm curious if that could be considered as we move forward.
I guess I would say, we present to the city council the Capital Improvement Plan as a city next Wednesday, next Wednesday night? And that's the, we're in the middle of the process. It's been presented to and approved by the planning board, now it's in front of the council. They'll have hearings on it in February, and they'll make a decision on that in March. But never say never, and I certainly will take those conversations back, and we'll continue to talk about that for this cycle. And I appreciate the suggestion that if we could find big things that are within the budget. Most of our big things are already funded out of capital on the city side, but if there were big things, we'll see if we can identify any of those, because it may help with some of the budget challenges ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Does anyone else? Yes, Carrie.
Sorry, my voice is struggling, but I just really wanted to appreciate that you coming and having this upfront. This is very helpful to frame our conversation. I will say, it's going to be hard-pressed to cut anything. This is me not having seen the numbers yet from our budget when we're in a time where we sort of desperately need to expand. I think pre-COVID, we had planned to do strategic planning, and that got held off. We've now made the time investment, the energy investment in that, and that has some, is going to come with some specific implications for expansion. And I worry about the long-term success of any strategic plan when we don't invest in it early on. And so I think I just wanted to kind of put that out there around, you know, I hear the ask, I know that with our contracts and our COLAs, we're probably looking at a 4% increase just to maintain, where in my mind, we probably need a much bigger increase in order to maintain the power and energy behind the strategic plan to really align our schools. So just wanted to put it out there, but really appreciate this guidance to help us frame the rest of the conversation.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other comments? Okay. Karen, Judy?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you coming, and we appreciate you giving us the heads up so early. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Hope it's not too bad out there. Okay. Next on the agenda is, do you want to do the initial school budget proposal?
So we'll start, so if my, Nathan's like been on all kinds of handout duty tonight already. So he's going to continue. And you'll, so you're, well, so I, Carrie, when we were in our other session, board members, they're anxiously awaiting their opportunity to touch the budget book. They're not going to get to touch it yet.
What?
So Nathan's going to give you some slides. So anyone who has been in a classroom before, you know, if you, before you discuss the assignment with the book.
Thank you.
If you hand out the book first, you know what the students do. They start looking in the book, and then after, they're like, what was the assignment again? So if you'll deal with an old teacher for a little bit, we'll pass these out. We're going to give you a broad, kind of 30,000-foot view of process, about what's in the proposal, and then we'll give you the binders. Tonight is not the opportunity for a deep dive into those, but to give you a framework and then hand them out to you. So, and then my apologies, my apologies in terms of process.
Dana will get to you in a moment.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Let me get.
There's going to be more books following forward here, and then it's going to be great fun. Get the Zoom going so they can not hook in the game.
All right. Give me just a second. Will these come in digits?
Nathan, thank you.
He's working hard tonight. Oh, you've got your own.
Thank you.
We're good.
Thank you.
It's been tricky tonight, or if it's.
It's up on me. Can you see?
I see it. I'm trying to see if I, see if this loses me some of the jump Wi-Fi. Okay. There we go. Okay. Oh, no. Hold on.
Is that because of my Wi-Fi jump?
Mm-hmm. Okay. PTSD staff. Matt, I'm going to come out and go back, if Matt's over there, I'm going to come out and go back in.
Hold on. Make me host. Matt's gone.
What's that? Oh, Matt's gone?
Matt's gone.
Let me see if I can make you host. He didn't leave me as host. I think he was sharing.
Try it again, because you pulled back out.
Yeah. There we go. A little bit of a delay, but we're okay. All right. Thank you. Another old teacher move. Have your audiovisual come and crap out on you right at the wrong time. So again, we're going to give you a 30,000-foot overview, frame, kind of the process up to this point, and then what we anticipate the process being going forward. It'll incorporate, what I need to let you know is, we, our process, which you'll see, started in August, and some of the information that we received, and I appreciate the city manager letting us know that we received about a week before Christmas, this addition, some additional things for us to think about. We were not able to hit all of those things in our initial proposal, but we're going to tell you what might need to happen in order to, if we're going to try to hit some of the marks that manager Kennard has talked about, what that might entail. But first, I think it's, I think it's important to talk about, you know, in terms of budgeting, budgeting is one of your most important roles as a board, and what are we trying to do? And ultimately, you know, we're trying to achieve the goals that we've set for the school district, and we're trying to do that, trying to be aware of the context in which we are living, part of which is a financial context. In terms of those goals, we're in a period of transition. Those who have been on the board, it's been mentioned a couple times tonight, we're about, you know, half to two-thirds of the way through our strategic planning process. We have developed a set of goals in terms of, through the metaphor of a portrait of a graduate. And the portrait of a graduate is basically this idea about trying to set a North Star for the district, and the North Star being, what would we want ideally a student, what do we want to aspire as a school district to have a student, some of the elements we want a student to have when they walk across the stage to receive their diploma? And that included this set of pillars through a set of community conversations and then work by a working group. And now we're about to move into the next phase, which is to develop action steps in connection to basically, what are the things, what are the core things we want to do over the next, we'll call it four-year period, that will get us from where we are to moving the needle towards those particular pillars? And what we established, and this is where the board, we talked about in the previous session a little bit, where we're looking for more board involvement and direct oversight of some of these next, this next set of work. The working group looked at a second set of questions that we had asked the community about what are we doing well and what are we not doing as well, and then developed this set of buckets around actions that we should be taking. Three big buckets that we should be focusing on personalized learning for students, safe learning environments, which is a combination of physical safety, but a definite emphasis on social-emotional safety in our schools, and then having a rigorous and aligned pre-K to 12 curriculum. And then in each of those bucketed areas, that we want each of those teams to be able to speak to, how are we ensuring equity and access for personalized learning, safe learning environment, and rigorous curriculum? And then how are we being thoughtful about developing action steps that are going to train our staff and develop our staff to be able to carry out those initiatives? So how about our context? Where are we, where are we right now as we try to pursue our goals? What are some, two things to look at, kind of some external measures, and then also what's happening in terms of our own enrollments in the district over the last 20 years? External measures, if you're looking at test scores, rankings, and awards and accolades, we talked about this at a previous board meeting, it might have been our last board meeting before Christmas, where we looked at the test scores of students in the district. And if you look at our state testing, pretty much across the board, we're in every category, in every grade, in every subject area, where Springfield's, Springfield, old job, Portsmouth students are 15 to 20% higher in their scoring than their peers on average across the state. They have very successful schools. In addition to that, what we looked at was across subgroups, were there distinct differences that would be concerning? And we didn't, we didn't see those. We could look at a few instances here and there, where one group might be a little bit lower, a little bit higher. But generally speaking, what was, what was great to see is, this was across the board in terms of these different subgroups in the district. So the, so we're in good shape. If you look at rankings, none of these are perfect. I think, you know, you want to be very thoughtful about each of these types of rankings have their own methodology, that are going to skew towards one direction or another. But broadly, you know, niche.com, which is one of the few places that will do an evaluation, give a ranking of school districts in the state, we're amongst the top five in that group. I'm removing a magnet sub-district that's in Nashua, but we're in the top five amongst districts in the state. And then all of our schools in U.S. News and World Report are all in the top 20th percentile of their categories around the state of New Hampshire, and some of our schools are in the top, you know, 3% or 5% of their categories. In addition, you know, in the last three years, two of our three, two of our three elementaries have been recognized as national blue ribbon award winners. So these are, these are, in terms of those, that set of external measures, these are very successful schools in terms of creating academic achievement. If you think about our enrollment and what's happening in our enrollment, we've talked about this, those who have been on the board for a while, we've talked about this a little bit. We, from the previous 10 years, our enrollment's gone down about 220 students as the community has shifted a bit. And then in terms of the projection of where we might be going thereafter is, based on our current projections, would be, you know, maybe another 100 students, so a continued decline in the number of students that we serve, but a slowing down of the rate of decline. Now, of course, these, these figures are, you know, again, they are projections. And I think one of the things that we're going to have to continue to explore and think about and work with our partners in the city on are questions about housing, what types of projects are being approved, who are the target audiences for those, for those projects, and are we, is there a housing stock that is going to be available for families who hope to be part of Portsmouth as a community, and then in turn, part of our public schools? And if, and if there is not, then what, over time, will that potentially mean for our economies of scale within the school district? What does it mean for programming? What does it mean for our percentage of the tax burden on local taxpayers? In terms of the process of this particular budget development, this conversation really starts again in August. So the, you know, the city council passes their stuff in June. We are, you know, off in July, people take some vacation time. And then in August, we're sitting down and we're starting to have that conversation about what do we think the big rocks of the budget conversation might look like in the upcoming year? And then how do we want to inform the kind of mid-level managers in our organization, department heads, principals, about how to think about their budget development? That work for them happens in October. They start to do that work within their own buildings in their departments. We sit down with them as a central office team in November, sit through, look at their proposals, have conversations about what they'd like to do. Then we develop our initial, what we think is our initial proposal, based on judgments we make around what we've been talking about with those folks. And ultimately, we complete a draft, and we bring it back to our administrative council. Now, administrative council here in the school district is composed of principals, program directors, assistant principals, and the central office leadership team. We come back and we say, look, this is where we think we're at, and we have some additional, we have some additional dialogue. In the beginning part of January, as we, so we're finishing those conversations right before Christmas, we roll into January, and then Nathan and his team are, have this short window from the holiday into now to put together our budget books. We, then, we come together with you, we give you an initial proposal, our best judgment about what we think would be appropriate for the schools for the upcoming year. We, in January and February, we hold a series traditionally for budget workshops, and then two public hearings, which are part of regular board meetings in January and February, usually with a target of the end of February, before February break, that we would have closed out and have a school board-approved budget proposal. Those, that approved proposal, again, because ultimately, the city council is going to have a final say, goes to the manager in February, as they, as the, some of the other departments in the city are in the midst of their work to put together a final proposal. And then, then we start to work with the city council in May, ultimately with the city council adopting a proposal in June. And if, Nathan, if the city council does not adopt, is unable to adopt something in the month of June, what occurs then?
The city manager's proposed budget becomes the budget as of one July. So the, so there's multiple steps, and Zach just pegged it. We finish up our process, I think the city manager just referenced the fire commission, the police commission also, the charter departments, of which we're one of those three. They're working now on their department budgets. The rest of city government, general government, will pull theirs together. And the city council is quite determined, they have the entire period of time up until 30 June, but right now, if you looked at the city council's target date, they're expecting to make that. the police commission also, the charter departments, of which we're one of those three. They're working now on their department budgets. The rest of city government, general government will pull theirs together. And, and the city council is quite determined, they have the entire period of time up until 30 June. But right now, if you looked at the city council's target date, they're expecting to make that final budget decision in the first Monday, I think, of June right now.
Thanks, Nathan. And that, just to be clear, that that, the adoption of the, of the manager's budget is not a typical, that's an atypical situation, but it's there.
It's just in the charter, it's just written up in the charter, that if for any reason council's unable to arrive at a budget by 30 June, the city manager's proposal will carry law. And the one challenge is, from what you may have seen in other places, is we'll be looking for a decision with the board about what our final proposal is by the end of February, before you go on school break. The council won't make the decision until June, but the budget they're talking about starts one July. So you'll have a decision and then you have to operationalize that budget in less than 30 days. It's, first time I've seen it, but that's, that's not unfamiliar or not, not unusual in city, cities in New Hampshire.
I would say that a lot of us who, who are in your central office team, more often than not, in New Hampshire and a lot of places in the Northeast, you're not part of city government. You are a standalone municipality and that's how you function. So a passage by the board, for me, my, my last job was the first Tuesday in, in March and, and we were done. As long as that vote passed, we were done. We knew we could operationalize at that moment, we were off and running. And if we had a failed vote, it'd be another month to turn it around and take, and take another vote. This is very, this is different. And we are in the interesting situation as, as a chartered group, somewhere to fire, somewhere to police, where we have a process that looks and feels like we're an independent municipality and we are ultimately not. And so it's just something to be aware of, that we are, we're one of the unicorns in New Hampshire in terms of the way in which we, we approach the process.
And not to belabor the point, but earlier when Zach and I were cleaning up final review of the slides, I proposed that we should change the phrase adopted budget. School board adopts a budget to approves, because I didn't want, I didn't want there to, you know, be members of the board misled. We're not actually adopting a budget, we're just approving what our recommendation is. It goes to the manager and there are each year, the potential for some tweaks and some adjustments so that it can fit inside the entire city budget that is then proposed by the manager to the council. So it's not really an adopted budget until the June decision of council.
And just, let's keep belaboring it. And I would say the other, the other thing to know, especially for new members, is I think, I know last year and I think in the year before, there, in both situations, the proposal that was approved by the school board that went to the council, both of those were adjusted after the school board had approved.
Yeah, downward in this case, which, I'm not.
Yeah, that doesn't mean it's going to happen this time.
Not pointing fingers, I'm just saying, like it was a, there were decisions that were made late in the process that, you know, the council, council asked us to, to make some concessions and, and ultimately, ultimately we do. And then I think we've talked about this in previous meetings, the decisions that are made at that point, the council's voting on a, on a number. It's, it's up to you, the school board, with your administration to execute on that and deliver education with that number. But to be fair, when the council conversation very publicly at this dais, at this podium is talking about a particular position, for instance, although you might be able to go ahead and have that position anyway, if the conversation was all about not having it, generally speaking, we wouldn't have it because that's the, that's the will of the representative government that we're working under with the council. But it's a number that they ultimately approve and pass back to you that you can then go ahead and deliver with.
Thanks, Nathan. So in terms of, in terms of the, kind of the operating, kind of the framework through which we think about what we're, what we're trying to do on your, the paid, you know, the staff team, is we're hoping in our budget development that we are drawing on professional expertise. We have a lot of highly skilled people working in the organization and we're trying to draw from that as we, as we come to a proposal. We are work, we want to work really, really hard to, to develop and maintain a high level of trust with the board. We want to be very transparent about what we're doing, about what we propose we want to do, about why we want to do it. We want to have, engage you in an in-depth conversation about what that looks like. We want you to feel good about your, ultimately your proposal to the city manager. We want to advocate for proper funding and we also want to make sure that we have, we're disciplined in the way in which we approach this. We have, we have an approach where we've included employees throughout the organization in our process to go up through to get to this moment where we're proposing something to you. And our expectation is for employees that they understand when in the process was their opportunity to advocate. And just like if we were having a conversation with the city manager, I wouldn't expect that in the midst of the city manager talking about DPW, that's someone who drives a plow would get up and say, I think we need more, more time for guys in the plows. And so our expectation is that we're, that, that we have a process that's been clear, it's been transparent, we want to make sure that it's maintained. In terms of the context, we, our goal in terms of how we're trying to develop this is, is to continue to, we already think that the district provides, you know, great opportunities, the achievement, we're looking at achievement levels. But we, you know, we want to make sure we continue to provide what we're doing and then we want to enhance what we're doing. We know we have, the city council is an educationally friendly council and is pro school. And at the same time, they're going to, they have to be thinking very carefully about, you know, in terms of the inflationary pressures, how to be good fiscal stewards. And I, I think we want to be thoughtful. I want you as a board to have maximum control over what comes out of the city process. And I think the more that we're good fiscal stewards in what we put forward, the more likely we are to have what you want to have happen be approved. We also want to collaborate with the city to make sure that we, you know, that we have, that we reflect an idea around collective budget goals. In a minute, I'll have Nathan take you through a little bit of this. So we always want to, we always start from, and I apologize, people at home will be able to see this clearly if they're on Zoom or if they're on the broadcast, but you have your paper copies. We start from the perspective of, okay, so what would it cost us to maintain existing services throughout the district? If we did nothing new and we basically maintained what we have, how much would it cost us? And I think Carrie did some good forecasting about four, four percent, but I'll let Nathan kind of talk us through where are we at now, if we were just roll, basically more or less roll over what we're doing.
So I, I'll, I'll try to talk quickly, but not say too much, how do I? So we'll talk in a few minutes about the book itself, the binder, and how maybe you want to attack it. There's a lot of information in there for you to read, so I don't want to, I don't want to steal all the thunder. But maybe the biggest single item is health insurance. In the, in the narrative, we speak to how we actually arrange for our health, as opposed to health being budgeted based on, oh, we have this number of people and we have this dollar amount of, of rate increase and do the math and this is what it should be. Some years ago, the city established a health stabilization reserve. So we increase our health rate, our health budget by a 10-year rolling average of the rate of increase that we have experienced with our health provider. So right now, the 5.3% 10-year average is the starting place for our budget. We pay that on July 1 into the stabilization reserve and then the stabilization reserve pays the bills all year on, in terms of health. If it ends up saving money, then the, the reserve is made better. If it ends up that we overspend what we put in, then the reserve picks up the difference. And by, by that mechanism, over time, it stabilizes a smoother trend in terms of budget impact. It was created in a period of time when we were seeing single-digit increases in some years and then 20-something percent increases in other years. And it was having a real smashing effect on a, on a year-to-year budget process. This is a citywide initiative, we contribute to that. We're behind. And so right now, the budget holds an additional 2% surcharge to begin the process of paying back what we owe to the fund because we have been failing to contribute as much as we have spent out of the fund for some number of years. The calculation right now is that we certainly would break even in a handful of years and we would, within, I forget, somewhere 15 years maybe with a 2% surcharge, we would pay back to the fund. We're still talking to the city about whether that's an exercise we need to continue. And this might be a year when we don't start that, but as a, as a beginning point, we've added that extra surcharge. Some dollars in dental insurance increases, I think it's a 4% increase being handed to us by a provider and then some small dollars in other benefit categories. Line three is salary adjustments for our collective bargaining agreements. So across the board, nearly everybody in the district, with a few minor exceptions, nearly everybody in the district is covered by a collective bargaining agreement, they are unionized. So there's a lot of, there are seven different groups and there are small pockets that follow one of those groups. In your binder, you'll see a sheet that provides what the percentages of increase are for each of the unions, each of the employee groups. This represents actualizing the budget for the people that are here. So if the old budget had $50,000 for a person and the person that was hired to replace them is 60, then this starts with 60. Likewise, if it was a $100,000 person and they retired and we hired a 40, then, then the 40 would be in here. And then all of those people are projected to receive whatever the cost of living adjustment increases are that are provided in the collective bargaining agreements. The number on the left, the 993,000 is salary, the number on the right is all the rollups of taxes and retirement costs related to those new salary dollars. Line four speaks to adjustments to substitutes. So we spend a significant number of dollars every year on substitutes for teaching ranks, but also for support staff. Not every category sees a substitute come in if you're absent, but some do. What I inherited was a budget that hadn't changed in a number of years. And in the five years I've been here, we haven't changed the, the substitute budgets, but every year we're smashing through them and riding way over budget. And so I took this opportunity this year to try to right-size them. It certainly is just a baby step. I think over the last two years, we've averaged close to 300,000 of overage in the, in terms of substitutes. But I, it's been, it's a difficult category to beef up. We've also started paying our subs more, so we've exacerbated the problem. So in this case, you see that I've added $117,000 to subs and I picked up another $9,000 in taxes to go with that. And it's an attempt to begin the process of, of right-sizing our substitute accounts in the budget to meet the needs of the teacher and support staff substitutes that we hire throughout the year. Remember, subs are not just for absences, like, like sick absences or bereavement or the like. Sometimes they're long-term subs for major medical, for maternity. They may also be subs who come in because we're doing professional development with teachers who are removed from the classroom to be able to work with their colleagues for a period of time. That's certainly a minority, you know, in terms of the, the greatest portion is, is illness and folks being out, but making adjustments to subs. Number, line five is just a catch for workers' compensation and property liability insurance. Those two categories are both arranged through an organization out of Concord. Primex is the public risk exchange, public risk exchange, of, now, the New Hampshire Public Risk Exchange. It's one of the pools. So for both health and dental and for our, our property liability and our workers' comp, we're actually self, self-insured. We work through these pools and the pools are established and enabled under, under state law. And they are pooled resources that then cover the claims made by their members. So school care is, it provides us with our health and our dental and it's a pooled resource of members. Everyone pays contributions based upon what the actuaries say your costs might be for your claims. And so Primex is for our risk management, similar. Transportation contracts are up 85,000. That's related to both regular bus transportation, the home-to-school, big bus routes, as well as our specialized transportation for in-district special ed students who have transportation as an item in their IEPs. Those contracts are at four and a half percent year over year for the big buses and we've got a placeholder 5% as we look for an appropriate contractor for next year for specialized transport. Small dollars in energy increases, our commodities are locked in, we appreciate the support of our friends in the DPW, the Public Works Department Operations Team does the competitive bidding for electricity and gas. They do that, including the schools, but there are some increases coming in the distribution charges from our local, our local utilities. So we incorporate, we put some dollars there. And then in the area of special education, out-of-district tuitions, services and the transportation to those out-of-district sites, we're seeing a significant increase there of $470,000 right now. This has been a topic of some conversation and I would share with you that I think at our next meeting, we have Director Rick Matty, who is our Director of People's Services and Instruction, he's coming in to help talk about the programs that we, that we have internally, the, the needs that drive students in out-of-district placements and, and will help to ferret out the notion that maybe we could bring kids back and find savings. I think I've said to this group once before, we have 17 placements in the budget, 17 students that are in placements and they represent 14 different locations. It's not, we don't have six or eight or 10 kids going to the same place for the same program. That might create some opportunity for savings internally, but these students have different needs and are spread out, looking for appropriate placements. Altogether, that's a 4.4% increase, it's just over $2.6 million and that's what we call a continuing services budget. Want to keep going and just say, so, so the final adopted budget that we're operating under today, the FY '24 budget is $60,680,000. That continuing services increase that we were just talking about, 4.6 million, is 4.4%. That's the same people and same programs, just recognize the contractual and legal obligations we have rolling those things forward. Additionally, in each of the last multiple years, so I've been here, this is my fifth budget cycle that I'm with you for, each year, late in our process and then late in the city's process, one of the things that we've been taking a beat on is cutting some of the operating dollars. Let me step back and say, when you get your book and you're looking through budget, we break it down pretty simply into three huge buckets, salaries, benefits and operating. In other forums, we've called that the discretionary budget, principals call it the building budget, it's the stuff. It's contracted services, it's supplies, it's repair and maintenance accounts, it's equipment, software settles in there, all of the things. And by the way, if you look at the pie chart, which you'll see in the book, things, the stuff, the operating is, when you take out the contracted services for things like busing or for energy or for maintenance, it's a very small slice of the pie. It's a hard place when you always take a swing because that's where the papers and pencils, the computers, the, the, the copiers, the, you name it, the Prometheus on the wall, the teaching materials and supplies, that's where all of those things live. And if you want to have a really big impact on kids, short of cutting the teacher in their classroom, take away all the stuff that they're using. So it's, I tell you that, we've added in $311,000. Those are the requests that we've honored from the building level and the department heads saying, this is what I had X number of years ago, this is what I asked for last year and the year before, can I try again to get some more of this back? Sprinkled in, there are some things that are really new. In athletics, for instance, we've had the luxury of working with, went with Douglas Hospital and have had an athletic trainer at events all around the high school program. And that has been at no cost to us. Wentworth Douglas has now merged itself with something bigger out of Boston, I forget which one, Beth Israel?
Mass Gen.
Mass Gen. And that's not a model that they're going to support, they're excited and eager to have a trainer here, but there's going to be a cost. We've, we've had to put that cost in. So there are some new things in there, not just some let's get back things, but that's a half a percent on its own. And then we actually are seeing a very, very, very slight reduction in this budget in terms of FTE, full-time equivalent, this is the staffing metric we use. When we step back and say, I'm a 1.0, working all year long, the other members of the staff that are here are 1.0, but most of your paraeducators in the building are just less than a 1.0 because they work a fraction of the day. Some of my clericals work year-round, they're 260-day people, but some of them work just school year. And so when you calculate the number of days, when you multiply the number of days they work times the hours they work, it's 1,950 hours worked by a full-time clerical. If you only work school year and you work seven and a half hours or seven or six, when we do the math, you're a prorated FTE. On the city side, they talk about full-time and part-time. On the school side, we actually have an FTE proration. In some of our union contracts, like in clericals, they use that FTE proration, they use that factor to multiply and come up with a prorated share of leave time, for instance, that you're entitled to in that capacity as a clerical. So it's important that we use it. When the dust settles on this proposed budget as it stands right now, we're down four one-hundredths of an FTE. So it's essentially flat. So same people, but with some of the changes we've made, moving staff from federal grants in and out, there are some costs because salaries are different, people that are, positions that are being reduced to positions that are being added, they're netting out to different dollars, even though the head count is ending up being essentially the same. So combined with that, 287,000, the continuing services and the additional operating and staffing requests lead us to a $63.95 million operating proposal, that is 5.39% increase year over year.
So if you think back to the conversation we had just before we started talking about this, I mean, you know, Benjamin Canard talked about the fact that the COLA, the cost of living adjustment, and this is, this is a Boston Cambridge-based figure of inflation, was 2.6%. was 2.69, and now we're talking about our initial proposal, where we would not effectively, we are moving some positions around, but we're, we're actually more or less have the same number of positions, which still put us in a position where we are at 5.39%. So if we were trying to get, if we were trying to get back to that inflationary measure of 2.69, that'd be, from the proposal we are giving you right now, would be a $1.6 million reduction. So, that would be a healthy, a healthy reduction in what we're proposing. So the challenge is, you know, the current plan, we do, you know, we work through the fact that we knew, we had two directives that, not directives, we had two pieces of guidance that came from the conversation with department heads close to Christmas. One was trying to target no new additional net positions, and two was trying to hit this particular percentage, the inflationary increase. So, we've been able to grant some of the internal requests while not adding net positions in this particular proposal, but we are not at the point where we're inside of that 2.69 request. This next bullet point, super important to put this in context, so we are gonna include within this proposal the, a placeholder for if we decided, the redistricting committee, if there was a decision, I think we have real concern, this is some conversation amongst the group and then some other people I've talked to, about making a decision around moving lines. At this point, it's not enough notice for families. So we, if we were to determine that, we're really concerned about the number of classes at Dandero. A possible solution, temporary solution, could be the, could be installation of modular classrooms for a temporary, temporary period of time, a year, maybe two, that would allow us to dissipate the, some of the large class sizes that we're seeing. This is, this is still a discussion point, that's still, you know, something that the redistricting committee will come back to the board with, but we want, it is in there as a placeholder. And then, you know, to get under, to get under 4%, if we weren't trying to get to 2.69, we were just trying to get it under 4, that's an $850,000 cut from what we have, what you'll see in your binder. Nathan, you want to talk about the, we want to hand out the binder first?
No.
Because Kerry's anxious, so.
This was unfair, and I object.
Kerry was looking for colors.
On your update sheets, those colored.
All right, well, can I bring the updates?
Nathan, his is, the student's one's a little bit smaller, is there?
Yes, well, I took out all the things that might be pertinent to the program she's most interested in. Honestly, I didn't put all the details, Nathan's a conversation, he's not having to knock down. He's certainly welcome to it, but the idea, I didn't have to carry that around, I may not be able to get you guys any of it, much less.
Oh, so you're helping him out? Nathan's looking to throw out for another Nathan?
Yeah. He's got all the summary stuff up front, which is where I expect you guys to spend most of your time.
Okay.
So, every, you have a question already?
It was a bigger picture question, yeah.
You want to talk big picture before I ask you about, or you want to talk, you're not talk budget? I'm not talking budget yet, let me just talk book. Folks are always curious about where to start with the book. There's a, there's a helpful memo right at the beginning. Right behind the helpful memo is a document that the former, that the previous board members have not seen, except that it's in the same format as your financial report. So, we took the format of your monthly financial report and we, and we put the proposed budget in, which allowed us to do a couple of things that are, seem to be really normal comparatives, but have not been part of the budget package in the past here. So in that report, which is right behind the front page memo, you have a three-page summary that is in the same format as your financial, but it provides you two years of budget versus actual, it gives you the current adopted budget, it gives you the proposed budget as it stands, and it calculates the variance. Now, if you're new to this and you haven't seen the financial, then this will still look a little different, but in our financials, we consider the salary categories up front, so the first section of your financial is your salaries. Meaningful here because of the depth of unionization, because these are all categorical in terms of the collective bargaining agreements that drive them, and so we take them aggregated by category rather than spreading them out through the cost centers elsewhere in the budget. Second section is benefits, and you'll see all of those benefits tied to the salaries. And then in the subsequent two pages, Portsmouth has for a number of years used a cost center model, but this is just operating. So I was talking earlier about three big buckets: salaries, benefits, and operating. The last two pages of this really speak to the operating, so that is cost center by cost center. First, the schools, then the curricular departments, if you will, and then support efforts, and then special education, and then the operations in the, in the end of the report. This is all of the non-salary expenditures, or non-salary and non-benefit expenditures that are broken out. And if you look, you can see the trend of budget to actual for two years, and then you can see what the variance is between the proposed and our current budget. So I would encourage you that if you flip to the first tab and look behind narrative, there's an 11-page narrative there that walks you through with some text, the exercise that we just kind of walked through with the continuing services budget and then with the proposed requests. It connects, it connects the ideas to the dollars, summarizes first continuing services and then it summarizes proposed. It makes reference throughout the narrative to some appendices. Those are just a series of documents that I've led right behind, so that you can, you can find those. I would encourage you to start this book, start the binder by reading the narrative. Following the narrative, flip to the next tab, which is summary, and you'll see the documents that have been provided to the board in years past, which simply offer a current year versus proposed year comparison. I've been dismayed because they don't even, they don't even offer a variance, like there's no, here's the budget, now get out your calculator, so you can decide what things are changing. And I, it's always felt like I wasn't quite given enough, so the report that I talked about up front in the very beginning of the book provides that variance. Here, there's a variance by bottom line, the total, you can find the difference. But this budget summary links to tabs throughout the rest of the book, which represent all of the cost centers, for whom we have budget makers that we have talked to and met with when Zach was talking about the process earlier. You certainly can poke around in the details under each of the tabs of the cost centers, but I think you'd find greater success if you read the narrative, look at the summary, contemplate areas of interest, and then go find the detail in the tabs. What we try to do is get the staff to provide some level of narrative detail in the, in the cost centers, so that it's not just, I'm spending $5,000 on supplies, but to some extent, what are those supplies, and what reasonably would they be? Some of them will look to you to be fairly contingent, you know, contingency-based, like, oh, I'm in a phys ed and I'm gonna need balls, and I'm gonna need nets, and I'm gonna, but even in categories like that, we try to get them to refresh it each year based upon what they might really do. I remember saying, it wasn't in this district, it was another one, how many years can you tell me you're buying a parachute for elementary phys ed? You must, that parachute can't be torn up after every year. No, they just forget to change the language. So, here, we try to keep the narrative fresh, so that we really are giving you information about what we're spending the dollars on. Behind the tab labeled "other," I won't do it with you tonight, but in case it helps, I really want to provide you with information that doesn't require you to know the chart of accounts and chase, chase numbers, chase dollars, but you shouldn't have to chase numbers. But to the extent that you're interested in that, and the reports that are here do provide those, the very first thing behind "other" is a classification guide that speaks to how our chart of accounts breaks down, so that you can see on the first page of that exactly what the account number means, and then in the subsequent pages, you'll see all of the elements, the subcomponents of the charts that you can chase, for instance. I want to be able to find things that are high school-related, things that are elementary, et cetera, you'll be able to find what the functions and programs and location codes mean. Behind that is the NASDAQ enrollment. So Zach made reference to some enrollment slides in the presentation. We do an enrollment projection through NASDAQ, they are the New England School Development Council. They've done that every year for a number of years, so they've got a historical perspective and a forward-looking projection, and it takes into account a fair amount of information about our community, our building, and our trends, but that's there for your information. At the very back of the book is the CIP, and for those members that are not brand-new to the board, the Capital Improvement Plan is the first portion, or the first piece of the annual city budget process. That started back in September. There was a request made, or a call for citizens' requests, that followed through to a department request. All of those were considered by a subcommittee of the planning board, and then the planning board voted in December to adopt a capital improvement plan, which is a portion of its master plan. That capital improvement plan, as I mentioned a second ago, is going to be in front of the city council for its initial consideration next Wednesday night, and they'll have a public hearing in February and will vote it in March. None of that is about spending money, that's just about approving the plan, but moving forward, when the city council considers its proposed budget in May, elements of the first year of the CIP will be elements of the proposed budget for fiscal '25. So the, it's a six-year capital improvement plan, the first year is meaningful because it might become money, the out-years, second through sixth, that's really a plan, giving you a sense of what's coming. So, we have elements in that CIP that were presented to the, to the planning board and will be presented to the city. I wanted you to have that, because it's not our budget, none of those dollars are in our budget, they're in the city's budget, but that they're at our, they're at our invitation or our request, I should say.
And I would just say, that's, again, a different, being part of the city, if you're a standalone district, those are, that's not, doesn't live someplace else. So I think what will be important, especially for new members, is at some point in our process, we should spend, you know, 15, 20 minutes talking about what are the, what are the school-based projects that currently are in CIP?
Yep.
What are the things that, that live there, and some of those are larger-scale projects, some of those are things like rolling stock, that you might just, vehicles that you might just think are part of what we do. So we'll try to, at some point, incorporate that, so you can see what is already in there as part of that planning process.
If you were really, if you were really hot, wanted to see it right away, it was in October that we presented this CIP plan to the board for its consideration before it went to the city, and in the week, or the two weeks before that, we did a capital update. I'll pull that out, Ken Lynch, our facilities director, and I will update it, and we'll get that to the board in the next month or two, but you certainly can go back and see what that looked like most recently.
As I say, and then the, we most recently, department heads most recently presented to the planning board just before the holiday break. So the, if you wanted, wanted to see those presentations, it's probably, what was it, about 45 minutes in the front end of the planning board?
Yep.
Probably with all the different department heads from across the city talking about their, their capital projects.
So none of that was about what the budget really is, it's about the book and the resources that you chase. Thoughts about the book, questions about where to start, what to look for? So Kerry.
Kerry.
On your, right up here to memo, the multi-year proposed budget, I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly. So you have, you start with '22 budget and actual, '23 budget and actual, and then fiscal year '24 adopted would be essentially from July 1st of '23 to June of '24?
It's the, so I changed the, I changed the language there, just because that's the adopted budget for '24, the year we're currently operating in, that's the budget that was approved by the council and jury.
Yes.
So it's, it's just like the '22 budget and the '23 budget. I did not give you the actual for the current year, because we're only six months in, and it wouldn't be a meaningful figure.
Okay, and then, yeah, got it, I think I'm following. It's the two columns and then the...
Correct.
Yeah, two column, two column, wonderful.
Any other questions? Liz?
So this is not just to Nathan, I'm going back to the slides here, I have a few questions. There was a, something that's come up in the past has been teachers advocating for their own things, and coming to budget meetings, and maybe doing public comment, or, you know, advocating via email, maybe garnering support from other community members. I'm a little bit concerned with this idea of discipline in the process. I think it's a, it's a good concept that, and I obviously, I don't want to create any contention within the schools department, I think this is obviously a budget, you know, could bring points of contention, but I'm a little concerned because I think some teachers are community members, so they do have the right to speak, and I guess I just wonder, you know, how can we silence their ability to advocate for new programs and initiatives that maybe we haven't necessarily been brought forward by the superintendent, because obviously we're being asked to cut our budget? And so, we want to hear those things, and so how do we, how do we continue to hear those things if we're sort of telling it all to everybody, everybody's focused, everybody, we got, we got a, you know, we have a disciplined process?
Yep.
I don't want to silence these people, so I guess I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of convey space for that, or just understand that there is space for that, because there, if they are members of our community, they, you know, they have the right to public comment whether they're members of our community or not, so.
Yeah, I think my concern is that you, then you end up having two processes. And so, you have, so then, there's process one, where I'm an employee, I advocate to my supervisor, I may or may not interest my supervisor in the thing that I'm interested in doing, then that supervisor might take that forward to the next tier, and we're going through a process where we make this process of, this process of weighing, making a bunch of different decisions, we're weighing, we're not weighing good things versus bad things, we're weighing goods against one another, and then coming to you. What I worry about is if you, my understanding of some previous history, which may be incorrect, is that there was a period of time in the community where you'd go through a process, and then the last two nights of your budget cycle were employees standing up, bringing people in to advocate for their own jobs. And I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a good budget process. I don't think it's, I don't think it leads to good outcomes, and I think there's an opportunity for employees at all tiers of the organization to advocate for the things that they, they would like, but I don't, I would prefer not to have a secondary process that undercuts the tiers of different people who are given responsibility to make those decisions. And, and I do think that, and it's not just here, I've seen other places where this can occur too, when that is, when that becomes known that that is the culture, then people are like, I just got to show up with 30 people at the last night of the meeting, and then I get what I want. And I, I would, I think that, again, I think that leads to short-sighted outcomes that don't necessarily feed the overall, you know, direction the district wants to go in.
Okay, I appreciate the stance towards, like, obviously your role in running the schools, but I guess I'm a little bit concerned with silencing anybody, especially when we're having these like public comment periods.
Sure.
And so, I guess maybe in the future, thinking about, you know, is there a way to create space for maybe some of those programs, so that they don't feel like they're silenced in a way where they can't bring some initiative towards the board because they don't, it's, you know, it's not their, you know, it doesn't follow the form of order here, you know? And so I don't know if there is space to learn about initiatives, so that maybe we could hear those things and understand that, hey, maybe we don't have the funds for those or that are not appropriate in the budget right now? So I don't know, just something to think about. Another thing that has sort of, I feel like has come up in the past, is, you know, the board's role in the budget. The board gets very, you know, although we're here a long time, you know, on some Tuesday nights, our, our role is very limited to the superintendent, the budget, and policies. And so, I think in the past, it's kind of felt like, even though we hear all these things, we get this whole packet, we talk about these things, we really don't have much control as a board over what happens with the budget, with the ESAR funds and whatnot, because at the end of the day, the city council approves a certain dollar amount, and then the superintendent, and business administrator, and staff, you know, figure out how that's gonna go, and we get reports back, and we can ask questions to provide some oversight there. But I think some of the lack of control may, and so I guess I wonder how can we, how can we deal with that, or how can we feel like the board can have a little bit more of a say in some of these things, and I think particularly, these late decisions. It's, these late decisions have come back, and then there's had to be some cuts of proposals of cuts that didn't necessarily get, I don't believe, in the past, I mean, I think there's been discussion about the board, but there's been a sort of decisions made by the superintendent even prior to you, Zach, by Steve, and brought towards the city council, these are the couple positions that we think we could cut, with the board really having no say in that. And so, as we sort of dive in, in the next several weeks into this budget, I guess I'm wondering, you know, what control can the board really have in, in, in... wondering, you know, what control can the Board really have in making those determinations? And, you know, can we pull back some of that control a little bit and, you know, have a Zoom meeting or an impromptu meeting, if you will, to have a discussion about what might be proposed as cuts in the interim and one of those, you know, prior to the next Council meeting, so to speak?
I was going to say, Nathan, I think Nathan framed this really well before. I think it might have been, I don't know if Manager's still here, but the idea, ultimately, the City Council, they don't approve positions, and they approve bottom-line budget. And all the conversation about programs, about positions, about all that stuff is justification for a bottom line. So then, we have the ability, you as a school board and us as your paid staff, to take what the City Council, you know, gives us and then to allocate it in ways we deem appropriate. Now, I think what is, there's a political reality to that, too, which is if you're having a conversation, and Nathan and I, last year, were in a position where we're having conversations back and forth with the Council about the desire to keep positions, the positions the Board had wanted to take out of ESER and make local budget things. We're having that conversation, and then ultimately, the Council comes to a conclusion that, well, we just want you to put those things, you have the ability to put those in ESER, we'd like you to just kind of put those in ESER. Well, they don't have veto power over what we ultimately do, but there's some political, like, we told you that you have X amount of dollars to spend, you made that decision based on public dialogue about the position that you were trying to defend. You can do, as a Board, whatever you want with that. You can direct us to do what you want us to do, because the, again, it goes back to the City Council ultimately is approving a bottom-line budget.
And then a quick last question. The ESER positions in the FTE numbers that you gave us tonight that are almost the same by like .04, were those ESER positions moved into that FTE number? And like, how many?
One, we can have a fuller conversation, but I'd say one out of the, one out of the three that were left over in ESER based on the last process, we rolled into this proposal. But two of those positions were not in this proposal in order to try to hit the no additional FTE guidelines from the Manager.
Does that mean that they, is there a question of whether we're going to keep them at this point?
Yeah. So in order to keep them, we would add additional money to the proposal in order to, in order to keep those rules.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Liz. Lee, Brian, Carrie.
So my questions aren't specifically around the budget. I've been doing this for a long time myself. So from the perspective of the slide presentation that was delivered, though, it does have an impact on, for example, some of the numbers and our argument for a higher, you know, percentage of increase.
Yep.
One of the things that we're very proud about is saying that, hey, our Portsmouth student scores are 15 to 20% higher than state average. That's wonderful. Are we measuring against ourselves? Have we done that? And how do we do?
Well, think, when, walk me through, what do you say, measuring against ourselves? Talk me through.
So how, over time, how have our test scores actually fared from one, you know, set of cohorts to the next set of cohorts, for example?
So in the last, the data that I brought the last time was looking at the last three cycles. And in the last three cycles, depended on the, depended on the cohort, depended on the group of people we're looking at, but it was either, actually, no, it was within subject areas. They either were level or were up a tick.
Okay.
So we're not on a decline in any of those. If you look at that, if you looked at math, English, or science, we're at least level, if not a slight uptick over the last three years.
And I'll kind of clarify why I'm asking these particular questions, which is if we have to defend the increases that we are actually looking for, you know, stating that we're doing much better doesn't necessarily say we've got a good reason to actually increase, right? The other question that I have is, do we really know that the root cause of the decline in student population is related to housing or related to cost increase? It's easy to say that it is.
Sure.
But is that really the root cause of it? And I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, I think we could do some deeper exploration of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Brian?
Yeah, Nathan, this is more around the slides. So the continuing budget slide, it'd be great to see the percentages on each one.
Okay.
Just pulled up. I was just commenting. The other thing I was trying to understand was the staffing changes net increase versus continuing services increase. So is it just, those people are still in the bucket of continuing services, but you've had to move them around because of funding, from federal funding, you were saying?
Yeah, so when you get into the narrative, you'll see, for instance, one of the things that we've run into is that we are a Title I school system. Title I is targeted against or calculated against free and reduced lunch metrics, basically. And we have two schools who qualify to receive the benefit of Title I funds, New Franklin and Don Darrow. I can tell you that there's another nuance that I don't know that I buried in the narrative, but that's, by definition, boy, I'm the wrong guy to talk to this, but Zach and Patty will help me if I get too far over my skis, but at New Franklin, the funding from Title I can benefit all kids in the school. And at Don Darrow, because of the metrics, the Title I-funded programming has to be targeted to students in need. And so it, that creates a logistical challenge or scheduling challenge or staffing challenge for the principal. The other dynamic that we're running into that is compounding this is that at New Franklin, we've had some great teachers who are very veteran teachers who have been in the grant a long time, and they're now six-figure educators, and the grant doesn't grow with the same enthusiasm as our salaries and benefits do. And so we are looking forward next year to bringing some of those high-paid educators, high-paid being relative, and it's not a judgment statement, just they're high compared to less experienced educator that could be in the grant. We're moving those people out, and we're moving literacy tutors in. So you've caught me in a bit of a, you know, strategic bait and switch, maybe, if you want, but I, we, for instance, moved one teacher out of Title I into the operating budget. We moved 2.6 paras, three paras that add up to 2.64 FTEs. We moved those literacy tutors into Title I because their rates of pay, they don't grow as rapidly necessarily, and the costs aren't as great, and it allowed us to keep our FTE count low. But when we move those, the paras don't carry benefits with them and the teacher does. So I ended up with more dollars in the operating budget as a result than I do, although the impact on the federal grant will be the same, the impact of the budget ends up being a little different. I guess that didn't explain it terribly well. Ultimately, there's $200-plus thousand of, I said there's one position that we're reducing, and that position went out at a total value of $100,000. And I'm adding another position, but because of its pay and benefits, when it comes in, it's $165,000 total comp. So I picked up an extra $60-something thousand of cost, even though my headcount stayed the same. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess my point is, I'm trying to understand, like, from my point of view, I know you made it in different buckets to, like, explain the differences, but it really does feel like that's continuing, like, if I think about continuing service budget, that should be that $287,000 should really be in there just because, especially when we're explaining it to people and talking about it.
It's a good argument, yes. Yeah, because we didn't really, so we've repurposed, too. So I, in some of the, somewhere in the notes, you'll see a reduction of a position at the high school, the teaching position, and the creation of a curriculum coordinator position to work with the curriculum director on the work that they're doing. They're essentially the same value. I think there's a difference of three grand or five grand, whatever it was. I kidded them together in the narrative, but in our details, we called them out because I was trying to keep track of the actual faces and positions without, you know, and costs. But ultimately, because we repurposed, we didn't really change, it's still the continuing service, we're just basically saying you are going to do something different this year.
I'm just saying, when we tell our story.
Yeah.
It makes a whole lot more sense to put that.
Yes.
Like, line it back in the continuing services.
That's fair.
It's a good argument. Thank you, yeah.
And then the other piece was just, I think it's true, but the budget's based on fully employed, all positions are.
Correct.
Fully employed, and we haven't traditionally been.
Pair educators, we can't hit them all, right?
Okay.
Yep.
For inability, inability, yeah, definitely, we, on an annual basis, have situations where we don't spend down everything that we budget as a result of inability. Let's say we have a math position we're trying to fill later tonight. If that position was unoccupied for a couple of weeks, well, that would be, you know, money that's coming back to us.
Yep.
And Brian's pointing out, in the financial report, on the far-right-hand column of the financial report, you'll see some notes. I put some things in there that say, that call out, I've had a custodial position that was vacant for six months. Well, even when I fill it, I still have six months of savings built in there. So there are, even if we at some point reach full enrollment, we still didn't spend all of the dollars that were allocated to 12 months of coverage.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Carrie?
I have two questions, but I just want to emphasize that point. I think it's really important in our future communication stuff that we, what I just heard was that the continuing services increase is really 5.39. And making sure that we highlight that, does that make sense?
Yeah. And so to be clear, just so we don't walk away, there are some requested operating dollars, there's $311,000, you'll see.
Yeah.
Wouldn't call that, so.
Okay.
It won't end up being 5.39, but the point is.
Staffing.
Staffing-related changes really are continuing service, and that's, I hear that for sure.
Okay. And then in the budget-making, I guess one thing, just trying to be fiscally responsible that sticks out as a general concern, when in this budget-making process, it was, it sounds, I hear the, what do you need? Was there also a lot of conversation about where are opportunities for cost savings? And more that, like, kind of the level setting we got tonight with folks of, like, we're probably going to have to decrease? So how are we going to do that?
So I think the conversation that we were having with budget-makers, when you think about how we talked about our process, that conversation that we were having in October, November, was really framed around, well, let me step back. The experience has been that City Council in particular really hones in on the number of new positions that exist, like, because they see the structural costs and they, and they, that's a real focus. So that when you go to City Council, that's the first thing they're going to be really pushing at. They're like, what are these extra positions? Why do you have these extra people that are going to expand, like Nathan, talking about? They're going to expand in terms of their salaries, their benefits, like, over time, they're going to grow in a big way. So the conversation that we had with folks, principals, Department Heads, et cetera, was that we were trying to limit the number of, the number of positions that we would bring to the City Council, because we knew that based on the, everything that we had done in CBA renegotiations, all the other inflationary costs that were going on, we knew, we suspected that we would be, you know, over four, you know, over five, you know, that was a possibility. We knew there was going to be a big number, percentage-wise. So we went into that conversation being like, let's limit, let's really focus on the number of bodies. And then let's do the best we can to kind of negotiate with the City Council around the percentage increase and see where we can get. That was our approach. Now, the conversation that then, as we were completing that process, then the conversation that was had with Department Heads at the City level was, let's look at 2.69. So we had, we had pretty much completed, our internal process was over, and now we're at 2.69. So in the conversation I had with the Manager was, I'm not in a position right now to bring forward with a short time before Christmas, and we had pretty much wrapped up. I'm not in a position to even propose the number of, because 80% of what we do is people. I'm not in a position to even start responsibly proposing a version of the number of cuts that would be necessary in order to hit that number. So anyway, so that's the advice, that's the whole process we went through, and then, but we never got, I would say that the people who were cost center leaders never had an opportunity for us to say, we need to collectively find, you know, 1.6.
Yeah.
And we haven't been engaged in that a lot, so we didn't anticipate it.
It is worth saying, though, that in the notes that went out initially in the fall, the statement was faces and functions. Assume that your stuff stays level.
Yeah.
You'll have to call out that which you need more of or what you need that's new.
Yeah.
Come prepared to have deep-dive conversations about faces and functions, not because we're looking to make cuts, but because we need to be able to find repurposing opportunities where things that we don't necessarily need to do any longer can be used to repurpose to things that we want to do that are new. And there was some of that that made its way fruitfully into this budget proposal. But I think there's, there will need to be more of that conversation, digging a little deeper with recognition, if we're expected to get to 2.69, that some of those things are not to be repurposed, they're just to be lost.
And I think what the challenge comes is, you can repurpose, you can slowly repurpose, I'm going to say on the margins, but you can incrementally repurpose as an organization, but to do large-scale, large-scale repurposing of existing human, you know, human resource is really hard to do and to do it in one shot and to do it responsibly with a well-thought-out plan that doesn't then lead to, you know, a reduction in the level of service that we're providing to students. So that would be the challenge, and I think it's a challenging position for us, you, the Board, us as your team, to be it.
Thank you. And that, sorry, I have one more, if that's okay, Nancy.
Are you finished, Carrie?
No, I have one more.
Oh, okay. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so I appreciate that. I think what I'm hearing is, there wasn't the time to do it, and I just, and it sounds like you see the same thing as important, which is, we have to show cuts or we have to show ability to cost save based on the, you know, based on what's coming down for, like, we can't go back with a 5% increase and say, we need all the things and we made no cuts. And so I think I just want to push that opportunity.
I would say, I think there was some nuance in what the Manager said. So the Manager's working with departments to start to, to start to craft something that, you know, that she and the Finance Department look as a responsible, long-term kind of approach. But they're yet to have the conversation with the newly elected, well, it's the same City Council who's back. But those, but that initial budget conversation to come out of the Council, and what the Council would like to see, hasn't happened yet.
Gotcha.
So this is the, this is initially the paid, the professional staff of the City coming to, you know, putting out some initial guidelines, just like we did in August. We hadn't come to you guys yet, but we talked to our people and said, hey, this is where we think we might be at. This is where I want you to start thinking as you're building stuff to bring back to us. This is where I want you, that's basically the equivalent of what they're doing now for their folks. And we are part of that. We start earlier, which is challenging, but that's what's happening. So we'll see what the City Council has to say when they, when they have that first round of conversation and give guidance to the Manager.
So the two can all tune in. That's Wednesday night, the 24th of January, 6 o'clock PM right here, and I'm sure it will be streamed as well. But we, I think we are scheduled for a Department Heads meeting with the City Manager that next day, the 25th, Thursday, the 25th, where she'll give some revised guidance and insight based on the conversation she has with Council that night. That night will be presentation by the Manager and by Judy, the Finance Director. They'll go back through and talk about the Health Stabilization Fund and where they're at with debt service and the non-operating budget and all of the elements of the City budget to give them a forecast of where they think things like, where continuing services looks like for the City as a whole. So, January 24th.
What time?
6 o'clock.
So the other component of spending more money with the strategic planning coming together, curriculum alignment, or all of these things in a great budget time in other districts, what does the budget look like in that rollout? Like, is that normally that we would, you would have new positions to help align some of those things? Or do districts typically just adapt and repurpose their staff with, to meet those new?
I think that depends on the district, it depends on the, kind of, the financial wave you're in at that moment as a community. So, you know, I'm assuming your situation was similar to mine.
Yeah.
When strategic planning just meant repurposing.
Yep.
It wasn't, I heard what you were saying before about the need to invest. If we're going to say this is our, this is our plan, we want to invest money in what we're saying, we want to jumpstart that work, and we want to make an initial investment in that. Depending on the community you're in, that was never really a... Depending on the community you're in, that was never really a big, I mean, I might have some stuff on the margins as part of a, as a first wave budget conversation, but a lot of it was, okay, how are you going to repurpose what we already provide you, Zach, in order to make this new set of initiatives, which you and the community and we have decided are most important?
And I think it's pretty rare to be adding, unless you're in an area where you're developing, and I'm thinking like, some areas down south where districts are just growing like gangbusters, and they're building two, three, four elementary schools in the district. It's very different, so then you are adding, but you're adding on a giant scale. So it's either you're really booming, or it's, okay, here's your toolbox. How are you going to rearrange what's in here?
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. I think Byron has something, and Liz, and anyone else? Brian? Oh, Lisa, okay, let's do Byron, Lisa, Brian, and Liz.
Just a clarification, one of the slides on the Dandero Modular Solutions, saying it may need to be funded, does that mean it's not in the current?
It is in the proposal.
It is, okay.
Oh, it's not?
Nope.
I'm sorry, okay.
No, I'm, I'm scheming for other, I'm scheming other answers to that. Right now, I just got pricing on my desk today, so we didn't have a, the placeholder that I was carrying was something like 200 in my head, 1,000. I think it's going to be a fraction of that for year one.
The news we got today was positive.
Very positive. It'll be much cheaper than that for year one, but.
And that would be operating versus?
It would be operating, the request, I guess I should say it just as plainly, I've been downstairs to city finance a couple of times pleading that there must be something on the capital side where we could help find a one-time 100,000, 125,000, or whatever, to satisfy this, at least first year of this redistricting conversation where we need space. And we'll find the people, but you got to give me acreage, the classrooms to put them in, so. But we have found availability for the modulars, and they're not unfamiliar to folks in the Dandero School. They've been there before, so, not these particular modulars, but, you know.
Fully better than what we have.
But yeah, that number's not in here, so we have to, I got to make that fit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
My apologies.
Okay, next we have Lisa.
So I guess I just have one question about the process from here, because we've talked over the last few cycles about wanting to make sure that the people who are invited to speak at the budget hearings are people who really would have to inform us about specific financial decisions that we're making about this budget. So I guess I'm just curious what your initial thoughts are on who those people are, if you can share, and if you're not ready, just.
So the two things we know, so are, you know, and we kind of have taken this out of conversations that have come from the board. We feel like we've heard repeat conversations about a couple of items. Because those who haven't been with us before, you know, we typically have three, at least three budget workshop sessions, which are a deep dive into a particular area. We bring in one or more people from that particular area to give a presentation, and then to go into really deep conversation about that set of stuff. So right now, our plan is, and Nathan started to preview it, so on the 16th, Rick Matty, Director of Special Services, would come in to really, and has been working on trying to work on some materials in a presentation to really discuss in depth out-of-district placements. How do you get into an out-of-district placement? What's the process? What is that, while being thoughtful about not giving FERPA-protected information about individual students, but what does that look like? How much does it cost? What are the state reimbursements? Like, really getting into that. So that was our plan for the 16th, to at least have a portion of the meeting and cover that. And then the 30th, probably some combination of Nathan and I, and maybe some others, depending on where this goes, because we still have some work to do, in all honesty, around equity between schools, and the amount of money giving you several different ways to think about. I know we've had this conversation, and I know it predates me, about equity in terms of between elementaries, but this is really across the board. How much do we spend per kid in each of the different schools? How many interventionists are there per student in each of the different schools? How do you think about those things? And we'll try to come up with a couple of different ways to think about, here's ways in which you could think about equity of resources going to schools. And then the third one right now we had is open, because we knew there would be stuff that we, you know, that would arise out of the new board, but we're happy to work on other stuff and have other people come, and make sure you get the information you need in order to make good decisions.
No, that sounds really good. I have two just quick thoughts on that, just as we're thinking about what other pieces. One is, I would love to hear from Rick Matty about more than just out-of-district, because I think there's been a lot of questions about what we're doing in the buildings as we're unable to fill the pair of positions. And I know that people are doing a lot of creative things, but I think it would be helpful to know how we're managing with the resources that we do have to try to serve the kids that aren't being placed elsewhere. And then I have just two other questions, which we can deal with later, but one is, you know, we've talked about, as communications is our other goal in addition to the strategic planning, the idea that we might have budget needs around maybe a part-time communications person. I understand why perhaps that's not here now.
Yes.
But I'd love to know, like, are we able to use some of the resources on the city side? Because they've had a position on community outreach, or are there other ways that we'll be able to do that? And that could be a later question, but that's just one for.
I'll say, the quick version is, because I think in a previous memo at some point, I referenced like, the need for additional.
You did.
Additional people help. And once we got into where we were and tried to hit that initial, like, net zero, basically, I struggled to put my own, when I saw as my own need in there, over some of the other requests that we were receiving. So even a part-timer is not in this proposal currently. I mean, we would love to enhance that capacity with a person who's actually devoted to that work. And I think there's still conversation to be had around which portions of the city apparatus can we utilize and when? And the city hasn't been, we just haven't had the conversation. Some of the communication staff have been offered in times where like, we have like crisis stuff, and you want someone to write a press release for you or something. And, but that's about been where it's limited, it hasn't been. We can develop a newsletter for you, we can rework your website, we can, here's the social media campaign that a paid person can be focused on doing, as opposed to stipending kind of a, you know, a group of people. So anyways, so all good questions, but no, you won't find it in there despite my foreshadowing in a previous memo to the board that I was hoping that we had.
I expected that might be the case, but it would be just cool to know if there's any city resources that we can tap, since we are cautiously postponing that idea. Last quick thing, since we're talking about adding some curriculum position in the high school, I'd be curious to know sort of how that fits into our strategic planning around curriculum, or sort of how that fits into like broader picture of where they're going with the curriculum at the high school? I don't know that that needs to be budgeted or not, but it's just a question.
Well, I think it's a good, and I think it's one that definitely, we could, I think Steve Koenig could do a really good job of explaining the importance of that role, what's been happening with it this year as a, we had, this is kind of institutionalizing a move we made last year. And I think he can very passionately speak to the importance of it, and I think it'd be important for you to have an opportunity to ask some questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Lisa. Brian, and then Pip, and then Liz. I'm just going with people that haven't spoken yet, although you have. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to address something that Carrie, you had mentioned about, you know, us trying to lower the budget. I think, you know, I think it's our responsibility to certainly try to look for ways to, you know, do our best. But at the end of the day, if we said, we all vote for 5.39%, and we have reasons to back it, and that we can go to bat for it, and work with our city councillors and our community, you know, I think, you know, that's what we should do. And especially if we believe in it. So I just wanted to point that out, that although the city manager came in, you know, I think it's important for us to give a responsibility for the schools, also for the community. So we should do what we think is best. And ultimately, it's council's decision, but, you know, I just wanted to say we can support each other on this.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thanks for saying that.
Actually, what I was going to say was similar to what Brian said. I completely agree with you, Brian. And we are the primary body to educate, I mean, to advocate for education here. So I don't want us to be eliminating things preemptively. And what I wanted to say was just sort of to reiterate what others have said tonight in terms of what story we present, because it's really helpful that you all have already been working creatively to see how we can move things around and fit better into what's being requested of us. But I think it's important to present our starting place as where we actually are first, and then go down from there. So I want to make sure that somewhere that's apparent, and that's what we start with when we speak to anyone. Because we are already making cuts before we're even showing those cuts. So I think that's really key, to keep those visible as we move into making the cuts. And then Nathan, I just wanted to thank you for your continual efforts to organize this binder in a way that is easier to understand, because every time it gets easier, and it looks amazing this time. So I'm actually looking forward to looking at it.
And.
Which is a first for me.
Thank you. And any suggestions that you have? I mean, I hesitate to, I hesitate to just reinvent the wheel quickly overnight and do something different, because there are a lot of people that look at this and use this, and so I don't want to be arbitrary like that. But things like, there's no variance here calculated anywhere. I mean, just, as many times as I've handed that to the board, I thought, this is ludicrous. Can I really give this without ever doing the math for them? So if there are other things that you find as you go through, I almost put a lengthy table of contents on this, and I thought, the tabs are already there, you don't need another piece of paper. But don't hesitate to let me know, drop me an email or something about things that would help in future sessions.
And I think that's the conversation we keep having, is how do we make the process real? And how do we make it accessible? And so what do the materials look like? What do presentations look like? Who do you need to talk to? That, so we're very much open to, because sometimes, some of this is, it's good backup material, but it's, some of it's minutia that's, not minutia, my humble apology. But it's minutia, and so sometimes, and so really, there's a conversation, that's a really important conversation to be had, that's really here. And this, and some of this stuff is down here, it's just backup to feed this. And so whatever we can do to improve, yeah, to continue to evolve what this is, totally open to it. And some of it, we might even be able to do some of it. I'm like, I'm overselling. Some of it might be able to do during this, during this cycle. The stuff that you're already conceptualizing, it would be great if I had blank. We might, I mean, we're at the very beginning of the process. We might be able to put those things together, not for the next meeting, but for a meeting or two out, that would put you in a better position to make the types of choices and decisions you need to make.
I should add, too, that even your explanation of the process has made it much clearer this year than ever before.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Liz.
Just a few things, I guess, just a recommendation for a suggestion. I guess I wondered, you know, within our budget binder, if, you know, we had, in the past, we'd had these sheets for ESAR funds, or where ESAR funds were going and whatnot. So I don't know as far as presenting everything to the public, and like a few other members said, you know, showing the actual, like, what we need, where we're at before cuts, but also showing those ESAR funds. I mean, is there a way to sort of build a couple page, like a section into this that would show, this is where our ESAR funds went, and this, now they're gone, you know? And just to say, like, you know, because I think that's going to come up, you know? ESAR has been a sticking point, and I do think that we need to, you know, have the folks give us some grace that we're using these ESAR funds for things that maybe could have been in the budget or in the CIP. So that would be a recommendation. As far as the out-of-district special ed, I just wanted to give a heads-up before that meeting and ask that maybe there's some talk about how we're contracting? Because my understanding is that the state has moved into an almost like a bargaining type. I think they're in a better position, obviously, than a smaller school district. But they've, as far as Medicaid payment and whatnot for out-of-district or residential treatment facilities and whatnot, the state has changed how they contract for those things and negotiate and whatnot. And so I guess I wondered if there's any capacity for schools to do similar, or what that might look like? You know, if the school could even band together with other schools and try to put pressure, so that we're in a better position contracting for these locations, and we're not just paying the sticker price. And then last, I guess, you know, there's been talk, I think here and there, we'll sometimes get an email, about restructuring of elementary schools. And I think that's a really complicated conversation, obviously. I don't know if it's being fully had in the redistricting committee. But, you know, the idea would be that, you know, and other towns have effectively moved to this, in Somersworth and Hampton, over the past several years, moved to a model of, you know, one school's, you know, K1, one school's 2, 3. And by doing that, they're able to combine their, you know, better use their resources, or maybe cut resources in that ways, because they're not having to have a resource at every single school. Obviously, a complicated conversation, because people move to certain communities for certain schools. There's been a lot of efforts into the playgrounds, and there's been a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, obviously, some issues with busing and whatnot. What does that actually look like? But I wonder, you know, if there's this resource equity space, like, where would that conversation take place? Like, should it be taking place in the redistricting committee? I just wonder if there could be some sort of cost analysis or broader discussion? Maybe this year's not the year, but, you know, is there, is that part of the discussion at all? And where would that fit in if it could be put into the discussion?
My, without having any conversation with anybody, so my take would be that it makes sense that the beginnings of that conversation would happen in the redistricting kind of dialogue?
Yes.
Because that group is initially looking at, is there a need to redistrict? Right, and doing a deep dive, just on, is that even a need for the intermediate term? And then that type of, I would say, that's not something that would happen in the fall. The type of realignment, if we, let's say we decided that we did need to do some type of realignment as a result of population patterns, I, it's a major lift. I'm not saying that should not be considered, it's a huge lift, though. And that would not be something I think we would be able to responsibly pull off for the fall of the upcoming year. But I think the start of that conversation should be in the redistricting committee.
Yeah, I guess I just wondered how these other school districts have managed to do it so effectively, and, you know, fairly recently. So I think it's a conversation that I think we should probably have, if we're talking about cutting positions and, you know, needing to cut back, and what the future of our budgets look like. Especially, we're saying there's dwindling numbers, but that doesn't mean, we're still operating three schools. And so I think it's a conversation we need to take seriously and look at what other schools have done. But I guess I just want to throw that out there, because I think we need to find a place for it, too. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Liz. Okay, I think we can sum up this conversation. I guess I would just like to say that 1.6 million, let's assume that the average teacher counting salary and benefit is approximately 100,000. I'm just throwing that out. I don't know if that's totally accurate.
It's a lot of, it's a lot.
But that means we have to cut almost 11 teachers. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't cut teachers across the board, but 1.6 million is a lot. So just think of it that way, that that's 11 teachers. And again, we're not going to cut 11 teachers, but that's one way of looking at it. And that's pretty disgusting. Anyway, with that, we'll end the conversation.
Can I ask you one?
Yes, Lisa.
For our new board members, when do you want us to send questions to you and Brian? If we have any questions for the hearing next Tuesday? Just so that we can give Rick Matty a heads-up if people have anything.
We have a suggestion. So Nathan and I were talking about this today.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about your idea, which I liked, about how to approach this, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, let me build a plane in flight and see what you think. I like the idea of being able to prepare answers for you. I certainly try to come prepared to answer every question you might ask on the fly, but I also, I would hate in the middle of this process to have to do a lot of, I don't know, I'll get back to you. And so my suggestion is, in anticipation of the next meeting, you guys, if we emailed Zach and myself and the chair, vice chair, whatever the distribution list is, if I could start compiling them, I'll put the questions and answers together, and then can bring that to each subsequent meeting. If I've got questions that need a little more digging, a little more, you know, a little more data work, and I can't bring it to the next week, I'll bring it to the following week. But each time, I will continue. week, but each time I will continue either to create another one or add to a Q and A data set that I can share with the board. And then it can become part of your binder and part of the process.
Sometimes I, another experience I've had is similar to that, is we've developed frequently asked question documents that were for the board but also for the public.
And the public.
And it was like, okay, these are questions that are coming from the board, filtering up through the board or might be from someone in the public who's reached out to us. And here is our, you know, here's the paragraph response or the couple sentence response to each of those things or maybe more depending on the need. All those things, you know, it's all just a matter of bandwidth and what can we pull off and how quickly can we pull it off? But I think we have a desire to do that type of dive and be responsive in that type of way. It's just a matter of how quickly we can keep up with what's coming in, so.
And I would invite you, I mentioned including the superintendent, one because he's the superintendent, but two because to the extent that it has anything to do with resource allocation of having Rick do something different or having somebody else come to a meeting, I would want him to be in the loop on that. But to the extent that it's answer the question about this thing on this page or could you get me more information about X, Y, Z, then if I'm on it, I can get to work on that first opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we also, in the past, we always had budget meetings every Tuesday and Thursday in the month of January and February. So keep in mind, we can add a meeting if we feel we need to. We're asking people to do a lot, but keep that in the back of your mind.
Welcome board, new board members. Into the fire, let's go.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, everyone. That was a wonderful discussion. Okay, we're on to the superintendent's report.
All right, the superintendent's going to catch up with just not budget stuff real quick. So in the report, basically you have a memo, the quickly update you on the, our work around lead stuff, the most important highlights of that are that the facilities team came in on the Saturday before the holidays and re-collected new samples for all of our water outlets. To be clear, we have just, you know, what we're supposed to do based on the initial reads, shutting down those, shutting down the access to if it's bubblers or drinking, putting up, in some cases, a sum, it's just a sign in a space that we can monitor that says hand washing only. We've taken all the steps that we're supposed to take. We're still, we're going to, and then we're going to remediate based on all the testing we had the first time, even though we are somewhat skeptical that the testing is not accurate because of the, we didn't do the right methodology. We think that led to higher levels than actually exist, but we are going to remediate at all the outlets that showed a level beyond BRL, beyond the instrument. So we're in the process of doing that. Kenny, so we're waiting for those samples to come back and then we've got, but we're already in process on the remediation. I included for you a couple links about some of the products that we're using to do some of that work and we'll continue to update you as we go. I look forward to coming back to you one way or the other on what the second round of samples looks like and was it, was what we got truly a reflection of what was there or not? Either way, I just want you to know and want the public to know. And then we'll continue to pound along around making sure everything gets remediated. Cost wise, the area that will be, you know, we'll get into some more expensive costs are going to be, the bubblers tend to be the expensive things, the water, those are a combo water filling station slash water fountain? Water fountain. And
Bubbler.
Yeah, bubbler was not terminology that everybody knew. So that is, you know, that could get us up into the tens of thousands of dollars around those replacements, but we're still in the midst of things. So each time, I anticipate every time we have a regular meeting, I'll be coming back to with an update until we've finished that work. And then as we start to finish that work, then we'll be back out to the public about, okay, here's the testing, here's remediation, here's where we're at. So that's the latest on lead.
Okay. And then
Oh, you had a question down here.
Oh, okay. Question?
Yeah, on the remediation relative to the, like the methodology?
Yeah.
Assuming that the methodology is different, so that like the water isn't dormant, is there going to be remediation that is sort of for individuals who might come across a dormant thing and get?
So if, well, maybe, I guess I'm not, I don't totally understand the question. So we're in a
I think the question is, do the remediation include dealing with the fact that someone could encounter a water fountain such that in a state that would have more lead than is acceptable?
So, so I think that, I think what's, so the standard set by the state and set by the EPA assumes, in terms of what it is trying to prevent people from absorbing, the scientific community, not me, has developed this five parts per billion or four parts per billion measure, but that measure is dependent upon the idea that
Over time?
It's eight, between eight hours and 16 hours. Like that's their, so I, I don't, between the State Department of Environmental Services and EPA, I'm not, like, I don't know, I'm relying upon their measure and their methodology in terms of what's safe or not safe. And I'm not sure, I hear your question though, which is what if stuff sat around all summer and then people have exposure to it? And I think Kenny, I'll have Kenny come at some point or check on this, double check on it, but my understanding is we do do, we do actually do a flush post, post summer. I don't know, go ahead, do you know the answer to that?
Probably I'm waiting.
Oh. We're not supposed to be using
Mr. Lindsay?
The Oz, I've heard of this person, yeah.
Although he was up doing a lot of plowing over the weekend or
Yeah.
He might have gone to bed. I don't know that they do anything after like week long vacations, February, February, April.
Summer.
But I think summer, and it, by design, it was not because they were flushing out anything that might be in, it was verifying operational status before we bring kids into schools and start using things. We want to make sure that he's working as a preventative maintenance, but we can double check this.
One thing I didn't want to, it's a cousin of your question, it's not directly connected, but the, I know I had a member of the public ask about, is our plan to, and some schools do this, instill their way to combat concerns is to create a flushing program where every day in the morning you go and you flush all the, and that might have been where you guys were in New York, I don't know if any of that was happening, but we, that is not our intent. We're not relying upon, it's not, you know, the human element of some, does somebody go around and turn all the faucets every day? That will not be part of our plan. It'd be what are we doing mechanically in order to make sure that it is not human dependent on a daily basis to make sure that water's safe, so.
Is it fair, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting now. You're meeting. But is it, is it fair, I think, I think that coming out of this even more so than already was in place is, we want to use the bottle fill stations, we want to drink from water bottles and those filling stations where you would fill your bottle up are all filtered, you know, they're all, so if there's a question, am I?
The only thing I want to say, and I want to change something which I said to the board at one point, which I feel, I think we had one and I was wrong and I, Margot was here and said, are all the bubblers, did any of the bubblers, any of the fountain slash bottle filling stations come off as having a reading? And I said, no, because my understanding was all, the way I turned it that night was old school bubblers, old school water fountains that were not part of the filling station. I think we had one that had some level of something in that initial sample take. So I want to make sure I was clear on the record that that was, that I was mistaken. I can't remember the exact reading, but we'll make sure we're remedying that that spot as well. But the rest of them, you're right, culturally, we have been moving for years to water filling, water bottle filling stations, somewhat around filtration, but a lot of it is around hydration and wanting kids to have bottles. It is also an environmental component, we want kids to have reusable bottles and we want to encourage, there's a bunch of those things that come together in terms of that, you know, going in that direction. It just also happens that those units tend to have better filtration at the unit itself than our normal systems.
Yep.
I have a question.
Tish.
So at those water filling stations, there's filters. How often do those filters get replaced?
So, well, I'll answer, so when we were talking about the, I don't know, here's what I do know about, I think the way in which Kenny's approaching it generally. So when we're talking about the units that I included in the links, they have like a, I think it's like a 12 to 18 month lifespan. Kenny's been talking like, well, then we'll do like 10 months.
Okay.
And we're already headed out. So we're not going to play games with the range, like we'll go on the short end and then that's when we're, that's when we're switching out the filters.
Okay, and the filter covers the water filling portion and the quote bubbler portion of that?
I'm not going to say definitively, that's my understanding. But I, but let me double check before I say something's wrong.
Liz?
I just, this is just like a brief tidbit. And I don't know if my son was in third grade or fourth grade, so either last year or the year before, the end of the year, all the kids in the class say what they wanted to change about the school. And I really wish that the board could see these because they're great. But the teacher said that she'd have to get approval from you and da, 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 da. So maybe in the future, it'd be cool to kind of have those available.
And they had water bubbler, that was the thing?
My son's was, he just wanted a little sip because the manual use ones, not the bottle fills, were shut off for COVID. So I don't know as far as, I just want to throw that in there, that I think there was a period of time where kids weren't allowed, there was no water flowing or whatnot, so. But I mean, he enjoys having a little sip every once in a while and not having to fill the bottle, so I appreciate on his part.
We're not, we don't have an anti-sip plan at the moment, so.
Anybody else? Lisa?
Yeah, I'm just curious, since we are talking about the budget and what we're going to need to do to be as efficient as possible if we are looking at funding from DES to cover the cost of this, and I don't know if that's a school department thing or a city side thing, but there are funds available from the state for exactly this problem.
Yep, and Justin Richardson, who was here earlier tonight, has been at swag meetings and stuff with us, has definitely pointed that out and when those funds become available, the last, before Christmas, the state was still working through the requirements of what that would look like. We will always apply for things that we think will offset cost. At the same time, we won't cost, and the city manager and I have talked about this too, we, you know, cost will not be an obstacle to us correcting the problem. So it's gravy if we, and we want to always be good fiscal stewards, but if we can get, claw back any money through those funds, we'll absolutely pursue those funds. But this won't stop us from making the adjustments.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Thank you, everyone. Do you want to continue with your report?
Uh, let's see, I think the only two other things, email summaries were things we spoke to at our last meeting, because some of those had come in just before then. I will tell you that in the, your proposal is status quo in relation to foreign language. Nothing changes, the proposal as exists, still keeps, still keeps things exactly the way they stand now. Spanish would still be at the middle school, Italian would continue to exist at the lower grades, that continue to be offset by the money that we receive from the consulate. And so that's that one. And then the other, I'm trying to think what else was in there. I think the other two things were both things we spoke to at a previous meeting. Field trips for people who are new to the board, we give you notification, any overnight field trips need to go through my office and we give you notification of those trips. So this particular trip is one, if you've been around for a while, this is like a rite of passage for middle school students in French. This is the French students going up to Quebec City for what's a really good trip, one my kid took. So, and there's usually not a ton more information than that, we usually can provide you information if you have questions, but this will be that group heading up to Quebec, so.
Okay, thank you. Kerry?
I'm just curious, after, like seeing that this is in a few days and it is such a formality, obviously, it's been planned longer than that.
It was planned, well, it's a good question because by policy, people have to know us on international trips, I'm trying to remember, is it several months in advance? And so this was, I was notified of it within the right timeframe and I wanted to have a follow-up conversation about a particular item.
That's
So that's what it was.
It's not my, my question was actually, would you be, we don't do anything with these, would you be in favor of us removing this approval or is, does it serve a purpose?
The, this is one of those, you know, you move into somebody else's old house and you're not sure why it's there.
Okay.
And you just kind of keep doing it.
Okay.
So there's nothing, as far as I can tell, I don't think, there's nothing by policy that requires board approval.
Oh, interesting.
And the way in which this is described to me is that this is a courtesy notification of the board around these types of trips. This leads me to believe that maybe some year at some time, maybe while Nancy was on the board, there was an event that happened on an overnight field trip and the board was like, we would like to know when these things were occurring. That would be my guess, but this is not something that's in policy or that you're required to make decisions on. This is, as has been explained to me, a notification, so.
It'll do a little looking and maybe propose that we remove this.
I mean, it's always good to, I think there's, you know, I think it's always good, new folks are a good time to reexamine our practices and where we can find efficiencies in procedures, sometimes that's good to do.
Okay, I think we can put, we can discuss that at a future meeting, Kerry. We can put that as a future agenda item. I do have a couple of stories.
Yeah, see, I told you, I'm like, I'm sure there are.
Okay. Can we move on to strategic plan?
Yep, really briefly, you know, we've talked about it, talked about it in the previous meeting, it was mentioned tonight as part of our budget work, we'd be interested in, I was waiting for clarity about board chair, but be interested in members who are interested in helping facilitate, run these big bucket groups around personalized learning, safe learning environment and regression aligned curriculum. We would then assist, assist with trying to recruit folks from within who have some expertise in those areas, that could help and, but we'll be looking for board participation in a robust way involved in those three areas.
Okay. Yes, Pip?
Could you just remind us, could you just say a little more about what personalized learning refers to? I don't remember.
So I could pull up a slide, it was a combination of, some of it was around programming stuff. So again, this is, I think what we're imagining is we're turning over this bucket and it was, so inside of personalized learning, you had things that ranged from like CTE to project-based learning to, so some of it was around pedagogy and some of it was around programming. So it was a combination of those, primarily those two elements that kind of came together. And I think what will happen out of that, out of that group, and I'll bring, what I'm envisioning is, we've got a model that we think is a pretty good model from a district in Southern Maine, that I think does a good job of laying out a structure of what a final product could look like. And I think that'll help with, well then what would come out of bucket one? How many things are the right number of things?
Liz?
I mean, I guess when I think of personalized learning, I think about like specific to the child and so I guess this would also, I guess, and I'm wondering, is this also going to include special ed and, you know, is a big part of the conversation going to be special education within this personalized learning bucket? Not that, I think, you know, special education concepts can apply to all children across the board, we're thinking special education, but.
No, I think you're, I think you're on the right track. I think that if we were talking about, you know, how, now, how are we reaching students where they are, right? I think that's kind of the overarching part of this. And particularly, and then, you know, I think that challenge, that question is, you have to be particularly thoughtful about in relation to students with educational disabilities, you know, and how are we structuring things? How are we structured now? What should we be structured? So if, and so I think one of the offshoots of that group could be some type, several initiatives that are connected to restructuring or rethinking the way in which we approach special education, could be, but I think that, but it doesn't have to be. So I think it's, you know, putting together some folks to have those types of conversations and it might lead in that direction.
So just to clarify, these three different buckets, are you looking for two board members for each bucket and then, like what time of day are we thinking that this is going to operate? And I guess I'm just wondering, moving forward as we're picking committees and whatnot, is this, would that be the best way to approach this? You know, say to Nancy, this is what, you know, I'd like to do to help out with the strategic plan, I'd like to be a part of this bucket. But I guess I'm also curious, like you knowing more, Kerry knowing more about the strategic planning process, like maybe Like maybe I'm a better fit for one bucket than the other bucket. And so I'd be curious, you know, I don't know.
I, I think, you know, I think there's value, you know, if you have some type of lived experience or expertise in a certain area, there's value. But really primarily it's around having a passion for a conversation about education, right? And, and what we're doing and how we're trying to make the, the district a better place. And then engaging, um, you know, engaging stakeholders, not limited to staff, it can be parents and stuff too. But I, I think you want to be careful around the development of these groups to make them working groups and not have them, you know, you don't want a working group of 40 people. Um, so, um, but then, but then driving that. So I think Liz, I think it's, you know, again, lived experience can be helpful and at the same time, I think it's just being interested and, and engaged in what can we do to improve, um, sustain and then enhance what we're doing for students in this particular area. And again, just be aware of too, you know, the, the recommendation from the working group was also in each of these areas, specifically speaking to equity and access around personalized learning, equity and access around each of the, each of these. And then also what do you need to do with staff? There has to be a component that talks about what are we doing to assist staff in, in retraining them in a way that's going to allow some of these initiatives to occur, whatever those are going to be.
So will these also be facilitated by the greater schools? Like, I mean, so I guess I'm just trying to picture what this looks like. There's two, two board members leading this or are we giving handheld, is there going to be somebody there with us that's going to be like, this is how we're moving this along? Like what are?
I mean, I think the way, I think the way Leah and I have been talking about it is to turn over those groups to board. And to, and then to be, um, you know, to be in the, uh, to be in the sidecar on the motorcycle to assist as you go. But I think what we both heard, both her as a consultant that we've hired to assist us and me is, um, is the, the, um, the board has a desire to be more deeply involved in a smaller grain size of the conversation and we want to help facilitate that. And so that means getting more involved, uh, and putting in, in some positions to run some stuff and to, to help guide conversations. So.
I guess I just wonder, you know, we're paying all this money for a strategic plan and, and these seem like really big areas, like really big buckets, like personalized learning, um, and, uh, it kind of, so I guess I'm, I, you know, I just, I worry about going off the rails too. Like if we want to be involved, but like how we, how is this, you know, if it's not completely facilitated. So I think there, you know, it's, it sounds great in theory that we all should, we all want to put our, you know, hats in the rank and be a part of this. But I, I am a little bit concerned that, you know, we're paying this company, we want to get a good product and, you know, um, where are we going with this?
So I, I think on my end, I want to make sure that you're supported in, you know, I want you to be in a position to succeed. And, um, we'll support the folks who are in each of these roles in whatever way they feel they need. And that includes, that's, that's GSP, Great Schools Partnership, uh, but it's also your, um, your staff. And, and we'll figure out how to help, help you do that work. The, uh, the timing of when things are going to be, it's just going to be this inverse relationship between, um, well, this is tug of war, not inverse relationship. Be a tug of war between, you know, your own availability and then when, when do you have, um, stakeholders, other stakeholders who are, still have the mental capacity to do a good job at doing the work? And so sometimes pulling in staff who just worked a full day to do a seven o'clock meeting to have a big picture thought process is not necessarily the best, the best way to do it. But also sometimes you're stuck doing that too. So that's going to be the, those are going to be the trade-offs to weigh.
Is there a deadline for getting this done?
The fat, you know, I think there's a desire to get this done sooner rather than later. And, um, so I don't have a deadline. Um, that's, that's more.
How about if we say for the committee assignments that you're interested in and for this particular project, if we could get everybody's input by Friday? If you can let Brian and me know what your preferences are by Friday and then we can meet and Zach, um, we can put this all together. How does that sound to everybody? Today's Tuesday, so you have till Friday. Carrie?
I just wanted to offer from being in this, in the steering committee group on this, um, I, I, and having concerns about that. I, I hope that in the next six months, a year, two years, that we've really worked to a trusting relationship between the board and district employees. And I have cautioned before, but I do not think board leadership of these groups is a, is a good strategy. I think it should be staff-led with board representation and members. And I, so I just want to put that out there. A few things I just wanted to offer as far as like thinking about what might be a good alignment is that once these groups convene, each of them has all these themes and quotes and notes and things that are based on this. So the questions around like what exactly does that mean will be clarified as that group convenes. Personalized learning was really about, um, like project, being able to take risks, make choices in education, decide how you're going to do things. The safe learning environment, um, is, had a lot more features of, um, social and emotional learning and how to, you know, effectively express yourself, feel belonging, feel space, but then also the physical safety pieces as well. But it had a heart, a very high leaning, um, SEL spot to it. And, you know, I think that the curriculum, the aligned instruction, um, is a, a really important one in a lot of things that came out that I don't think were highlighted here. So, but apologies if I'm repeating. Is that this idea that in middle school and high school, our teachers can say, that's a Don Darrow kid, that's a New Franklin kid, that's, you know, and based on how their engagement and interaction is. And so making sure that, you know, we have that alignment and not that, I mean, some quirky differences are great. But making sure that there are differences that aren't affecting that. Um, so I hope that's helpful to just understand some of those.
Lisa, thank you. Carrie?
So there's two pieces that I guess I wanted to ask about just to get a sense of what people think. Cause I think that Carrie, you bring a great perspective to it. And I think that what we heard from a lot of folks on the board is that part of the challenge for the folks who were not invited to those committee meetings is that none of the data has been shared, none of the deliberations have been public and none of the thought processes that went into bubbling up these three things was like explained in like really granular detail. I mean, I appreciate that we had some presentations, but I think for folks to hear some of the stuff that you were just saying would actually be really helpful as we're kicking off these groups. So I guess I have two thoughts. One would be what is the data that could be shared out with the board? That's not like overly burdensome, but there have to be some survey results or some, you know, we've noticed certain words were themes in all the focus groups. I just think it would be helpful to see that because then you have like a little better sense of, oh, that is what they meant by this category. Or that is what they meant by that category to make sense. It's not about lack of trust, it's just wanting to have a better sense of what got us here.
The, um, what would be similar in terms of what the working group saw would be very similar to, we shared with you what I call pre-tude data when it came to Port River Graduate and it was a slideshow and it was, and so, so GSP had used their data staff to create this pre-tude data that then went to the working group and the working group just worked off the pre-tude data. They weren't in, they weren't diving into the raw data. Now, part of that too, it was Carrie had helped actually, um, do some of that kind of culling of the information and, not culling, but putting, but putting it together.
Coding.
Coding, thank you. Um, and so a similar process was done on this second wave, which is the second two questions. And the working group worked from the same type of pre-tude data. All that's totally, I can put in the next.
I think it would be so helpful to see that. And then that sort of brings me to my other question about process going forward. I think that we had sort of from the beginning, a lack of clarity about whether these were going to be public meetings. And I think that now that we're moving into the next stage, I would really like us to revisit that. I think as we're trying to build community engagement, build trust, build partnerships, and also just convince the city leaders who are going to give us money ultimately for this stuff, that we've had a really fully baked process. I think that these meetings would be best as public meetings, noticed like other meetings with agendas, public supporting documents and minutes. I'm happy to make a motion if we feel that that's necessary to change the structure. I wrote it down. I don't know if it's necessary though. So I'm just putting that out there.
Do you feel the administration could carry through with that?
With?
With, with her suggestion or should we?
Oh, no, I mean, we'll, we'll.
You can do it.
We can do it because, because what would be, what we would be doing is taking agendas that are created, posting those agendas. Take, you know, minutes would be, I wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have the ability to have an onsite paid staff member do minutes. But then minutes, if minutes are given to us, we put it up and post it and have it available, have it, warn it, do all those types of things. Yeah, very doable.
Okay.
And we're talking about three groups, three groups. I mean, we should be able to manage three groups worth of warnings and minutes and, uh, back and posting.
Okay, is that acceptable to everyone that we accept?
Do you need a motion or we're just?
I don't think we need a motion.
Nancy, I have a question to that.
I see Pip's hand up.
I just had a question to that though, Nancy. Do we need to make a motion to create these committees in the first place, right now?
No, no, it's part of our, in December, we discussed organizing these groups and then having board involvement. So it's already been discussed by the board. I don't think you were here.
I'm saying to create new committees, I think we need to have a motion.
Well, we discussed it in December and we all agreed that we were going to do this.
So I know, but just a point of order, I think to have committees of the board to create like, um, um, these would be not standing committees, but what's the other term?
These are not board committees.
Ad-hoc?
They are, yeah.
Okay, why don't we let Carrie respond because she's been so involved with this?
These would not be board committees. These would be school, Portsmouth School District committees with board member representations. We don't need an actual motion to create them because the district is creating them and inviting us to participate.
Okay. Lisa?
I guess I would like us to revisit that piece as well. I think that in keeping with good government and open meetings, when we have multiple elected officials serving on committees, they should. And I don't think that we had a full discussion of that when we were setting up the initial committee. And I could see some value for that portrait of a graduate process to maybe let people be more open and not feel like they were being recorded or whatever. And maybe there was some value in that initially. But I think we're where we're at now, where we're talking about making tactical decisions that are going to have budget implications. I think it should be a board committee.
Well, that's not how we discussed it in December. We discussed it in December as we would have one to two board members on each of these three focus areas. So.
Well, we did not say whether it would be a district committee or a board committee. We just discussed what the topics would be.
Right, but we did not say it was going to be a board committee, correct?
So we, I, I just made a suggestion. So my suggestion was that, um, board members, um, direct these three. And then in turn, once it was an iterative process, and then the, the working group would become the board. So when, when the, the overall working group would become the board. So when, um, you know, personalized learning felt like they had some nuggets that they wanted to share with the board, they would come back to the full board and present, here's where we're at at this current incarnation of personalized learning. The board could have a discussion, engage that dialogue. It also allows the board to be thoughtful about, um, how to dovetail, um, one group to another group, to have it be more cohesive. Um, that was the suggestion I made, but we never, you know, I don't think we came to conclusions. I just put out something as a suggestion. So.
I think Pip had a comment?
Yeah, um, I wanted to get back to, um, something Carrie said, which was that, that, um, she felt like it wasn't the best idea to have the board, board members leading these groups and whether they're committees or not. But I, I wondered Zach, and I appreciate that you're doing this because you've had feedback from us that you, that we want more direct involvement. And I personally am excited about that and eager to do it. But I'm wondering if you've spoken to the Great Works Partners, uh, I'm sorry.
Great Schools partnership.
Great Schools partnership. I'm wondering if you've spoken with them about, um, this concept and whether they're in support of it and what role they're going to play. I understand they're not going to lead us through it, but will they play a role at all?
So coming out of this, so I have a conversation with, so first, um, general, general agreement that this is the, general agreement that this is the necessary pass, fast forward, I would say, from, from great schools. And then our follow-up conversation about the details about how to support that work. We're going to come tomorrow, I have a, um, have a Zoom call tomorrow to talk about what was the outcome of this conversation and, and what might that look like? But, but conceptually, it felt like yes, this was appropriate at this point.
Nathan, did you have a comment?
Uh, no, no.
Liz?
I'm just to follow up. I agree with Carrie. I think if we're going to go in that fashion where these are committees created as part of the strategic plan or as part of the school department, um, I think Carrie makes a good point that, um, it would be great if these could be faculty-led to some extent with school board involvement or created through the strategic planning committee, so like subcommittees of the strategic planning committee that have school board representation, happy to be the school board representative that helps lead the facilitating, the, um, structuring of that. You know, voting like, you know, who, but I mean, obviously now you're saying that we need, as a school board, you're asking us as a school board member to, you know, who, brainstorm who we might think would be good for these committees, I guess. I, so I'm just a little bit, I think it is from a structural purpose, I think it needs to, there maybe there needs to be some more direction from the, um, uh, the strategic planning committee about who's going to be on here. And then, and then the two members are going to be more so facilitating the structure, like, you know, the voting of who's going to be the chair of, I don't know. I'm just a little bit hesitant to go that route. And if we're going, if these are just going to be committees of the school board and they're just reporting back to the school board, I think we need to structure these as, you know, on our list of committees and have them be, you know, strategic planning committees under subcategory or something.
Did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate on that. I think it's, I think that what I'm hearing is that these are sort of, um, ad hoc committees that are being developed that will then, that are just making recommendations, they're working with a team to make recommendations back to the board. I hadn't remembered your, um, concept that the board would be the working group, but I, I think that makes sense. So it sounds like we'll be, these sort of representatives from the board would go out, work with the teams, get the information and then bring it back to the board that would then make decisions.
I think that's, that's the way it's envisioned. Yep. But again, it's, it's a, um, it's a proposal, again, with, in conjunction with great schools trying to be responsive to what we felt was the board's vibe of the board.
Yeah, I, as I said, I appreciate that. I, I think personally that we would, would need some oversight from them still on, on this process and how to do it, because I don't think most of us are qualified to run the, the group.
Sure.
That would be my preference.
Okay, Lisa, do you want to sum this up for us? Oh, and Byron?
Oh, go ahead. You haven't spoken yet.
I just wanted to, it's, I mean, it sounds like these are committees. I can't imagine them being anything else. It's just, I mean, they're groups of individuals from this board reporting back to the board about, you know, reciprocal communication, which is like the definition of the committee as put forth in the policy document that we have in front of us. So, um, I can't imagine them being anything else.
Lisa and Nathan?
So I am sort of agnostic on how they're shared. I think it would absolutely make sense to have staff, if they have the willingness and the time to share it and the expertise. I mean, it's not ever a position I want to be in to tell a teacher how to teach or, you know, set priorities at that level. I just think that I would like these to be board committees. So with that in mind, I'm going to make a motion, which I've written down. I move that all strategic planning meetings going forward be public, noticed in advance with agendas and supporting documents and record minutes. And then they be ad hoc committees of the board. And that's what I'm sending down and we can discuss.
Do we have a second discussion? Nathan, did you want to discuss?
Yeah, um, so from what I remember at the meeting, these focus groups were, these focus areas were just groups within the strategic planning committee. It's already, it's, it's already its own committee. So these groups were then reporting back to the committee, which then is reporting to us. So I don't, because then if these groups were then made committees, they would be subcommittees within the committee that's already reporting to us. So that just doesn't make any sense in my head, making them committees. Like I feel like they can just be groups because the actual strategic. feel like they can just be groups because the actual strategic planning committee is already reporting back.
So I, I think what we're talking about now is the strategic planning working group would dissolve. That would go away. And then the, um, the board would become the strategic planning working group effectively within that kind of process.
Okay.
And then, um, and then you'd have subgroups run by board members diving into particular areas. So, so I hear you.
Yeah. Just needed to clear things up.
The, the working group would go away.
Brian?
Just a, a side note on all of this. I think, um, you know, since we have new board members, these three areas, whatever collateral we have to explain all these areas, because I know, um, I know Carrie was trying to do that, but if we have, I know you have slides and, and whatnot, if that, those could be shared so people can kind of think about what they want to be on.
Yep.
Anyone else? Well, I will not support the motion. I agree with what Nathan said. When we discussed it in December, we discussed setting up these three focus areas, if I recall correctly, and the board, one or two board members would serve on each of those focus areas, but other strategic plan members who have been involved in the past would also be involved in these committees and the GPS, GSP?
GSP.
GSP would also be involved. So it's not a board-run committee. It's a committee that's run by the strategic planning group that's existed since we started. So I don't think it should be a board committee. I think board should be involved and then whatever each of these focus areas come up with makes a presentation to the board. So to me, it's not a board committee. That's just my opinion. Lisa, Liz, Pip.
Well, I'll let others weigh in and then I'll circle back.
Oh, we could just vote. I mean, I don't know. Do others?
I was going to clarify.
There was a motion on the table.
Yeah, I have a, I just was wondering what Zach's opinion is on this. Again, I know you just sort of mentioned it, but just to clarify, do you see, like, do you see the strategic planning committee dissolving sooner than later? And therefore this is the most procedurally effective way to go about it? Or is the strategic planning committee going to stay with a board member representation and these would be subcommittees? What is the best way to do this?
So I'm trying to, uh, talk to folks who are part of the working group up to this point to encourage them to remain part of the process in some way that would be available to them. Uh, and then, and then I'm, you know, but, um, they're all volunteer and they've all volunteered their time up to this point. Um, and I think, so, so we'll see. We'll see to what extent those people would remain involved, but the, the group that was working would no longer exist in the same form. So.
But it would still exist though, right? Like, we, we would get new members or?
Nope. The board would become, rather than having a stakeholder group, the board would become the, um, kind of like the steering committee of that conversation.
Okay. So maybe the board needs its own, I mean, didn't we create, we didn't create that committee, the school created the committee. So maybe the board itself needs to create a strategic planning committee, which could have these subcommittees. And so there's just one strategic planning committee. So we're not, I don't know.
Lee, do you want to say?
I think you forgot about me a while ago.
Can we revisit this at the next meeting? Is this dire that we do this now? I mean, obviously we have a motion on the table, but is this something we could table until next meeting?
Let me speak for a minute.
Yeah.
So I just want to make the point that I actually really agree with Carrie's comments that we should not be leaving these groups. I'm going to make a point here, right? Personalized learning could have a lot of other aspects to it, like learn everywhere. In fact, I was in a conversation with New Hampshire Department of Education last week about learn everywhere. And so from that perspective, I don't know everything about how I could actually personalize somebody's education. That really is better suited for somebody who is an educator, not me. And so I'm really uncomfortable going, yeah, I want to go leave this personalized education group, for example. That's not my role. And so I, I'm, I very much agree with, with Carrie's position and I think we ought to reconsider.
Thank you. Please, Nancy. Tish, we'll get some new people in here.
So, um, we, we've commented on this group as being a committee and a focus group. Those seem to be two separate things. So what would this group actually be categorized as? A focus group or a committee?
I just want to be clear. I always use the same terminology when I'm talking about the group that we've used that were a working group.
They're a working group.
Working group that was working underneath me.
So continuing with these three buckets.
We did focus groups to collect information, but then, but the, but previously, yeah, it was a, it was a working group that was working for me.
So this next group focused on the three, these three pillars is still a working group to come up with an idea of what, say, personalized learning is going to look like, then that focus group would then come to the board and do a presentation?
We, no. So this would be people who identified interest in the board would be facilitating these groups in some form or another with assistance of paid staff.
Okay.
And the consulting firm. Um, and, um, what happens to the folks who, whether or not folks who have been involved in the last year or so continue to be part of the process will be, I, I don't know to what extent people will continue to be part of the process.
So it, it actually sounds like there's still some definition needed as to what these are going to look like.
Yes. So what does, I mean, the attempt was to take, again, in utilizing survey information we did, the focus group stuff was to take part of that, part of that information, look at it, digest it, analyze it, and come to conclusions about what did we think the community wanted as the end product for the work of the school district. And then what were the things that either needed to be improved or, um, or reinforced that we already do that would lead to us accomplishing those things? So the second, so the first part led to the Port River Graduate. This is what the kid looks like when they walk across the stage. And then the second part led to this, which was what are the things, not necessarily from the committee's perspective, but the, but, well, the working group's perspective, but the working group as interpreting the data provided to us by all the survey and focus group work that had previously been done. What do they think the community is trying to say about the things that we should be doing? And then created these buckets. Now, inside of these buckets, we have, and Nathan was talking about it, and we've got this set of stuff that is a combination of, um, of the things that we need to preserve, that people want to see continuation of, and things that people want us to do more of that we're not doing now. Um, and that's a, that's a list of items, um, that live inside of these buckets. The groups that then took, took this over for a year would then start that conversation with, okay, so here's this thematic area of things that people either want to protect or want to enhance. Which of these things do we think are most valuable? Um, and as a result of that, what are some key, um, what are some key action steps or initiatives that we want to see coming out of personalized learning? Uh, and that, that new group of people led by either a staff member or a board member would then in turn start to develop drafts of what those things should be, come back to the board to share, this is where we are so far in that work. This is what we're thinking. Here's how we're, here's how we're going about it. So that was the, that was, that was the conversation.
Okay.
Carrie, please start.
Um, I just wanted to comment that I don't support the motion. I think that as much as, um, good governance has posted meetings and things like that, 20,000 people in Portsmouth aren't doing that. But the message you send when you make these board committees and have board leadership to the staff of the district is a loud and clear message that the board is running the show. Um, and I think you're going to not have people. I think, I feel like we're in deja vu of doing this over and over again because everyone is saying we don't have enough information. We want more information. Um, and, but then when information has been brought in the past, it doesn't seem to be enough. And so I would propose instead of doing this, that we invite the members of the steering committee, steer, whatever it's called, steering committee, working group, um, to a work session with the board that we can just chat through all of this, get on the same page and together come up with a solution of, are these board committees, are these school district committees? Where are they? Because I think that will be really good, juju is the very technical word for it, but very good rapport to start rebuilding with the district's staff and support them in that process.
Okay, Lisa.
So I guess I want to just take a step back and clarify what my motion actually says because it doesn't say that anybody in, on the board is necessarily running these committees and it absolutely does not preclude, and I don't think should preclude, anyone who is staff in the district from taking a leadership or chair role in those committees. Most of our standing board committees are in fact chaired by people in the district. So nothing about establishing an ad hoc committee requires it to be chaired by the board or requires a board member who's on that committee to override, you know, what is being advised by the staff member who's running it. And in fact, most of our city committees across any number of departments are public city committees. You know, planning is public. I mean, when Joe Kelly was here, she said this process should look like the CIP, but it doesn't look like the CIP because CIP meetings are public and planning board meetings are public. And I don't think it's a lack of trust in staff in any way or a desire to supplant, you know, our opinions with their expertise and degrees and in the trenches experiences. But I think that we owe it to our community to make these meetings public. And the mechanism for doing that is to have it be an ad hoc board committee. So my intention in making the motion is not to in any way suggest that, you know, any one of us should be just saying that we know more or should have more voice in this. I think our staff, our administrators, our teachers should be the ones who are telling us what they see are the best ideas. But what I'm saying is that if we are making it anything other than an ad hoc committee of the board, then we're kind of skirting good governance. And we're not really doing our duty as elected officials to make our deliberations on our major initiatives public and accessible to the community.
Okay, shall we move the motion? Why don't we move the motion?
Just real quick, Nancy.
Yes.
I just would ask that, um, we, maybe we vote no on the motion and come back, I mean, revisit, revisit this in, at the next meeting where we are able to talk about this and have Zach or the committee for the strategic plan come back with a suggestion of, you know, after thinking this through a little bit more, of maybe a motion be put on the agenda of how this should move forward. Maybe we talked legal about it, whether we actually need to create an ad hoc, um, and what this might look like a little bit further. I think it needs a little bit more thought process around it.
Okay. I think that's a fine suggestion. However, we have a motion on the floor and we have to vote for it.
Nancy, we can, we can table the motion if we want to push it to the next meeting.
I think we've, I think, push, move the vote.
I am unopposed, I'm unopposed to tabling it.
I would like to move the motion.
Motion to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
And just do we take a majority vote?
It's on our little sheet here. Nancy. All right, just a minute. I have to look. Table the motion. Put, pop it aside temporarily.
So you vote on the tabling.
Okay.
And then we can bring it up at the next meeting.
So I, I have a question before we.
Yes.
Vote on this. So if we table this, um, when we do vote on this, can we bring in the, um, as Carrie was saying, bring in the participants of the original committee to go over the information that it seems we're all looking for, um, before we vote on this, after we table it, if I'm using the correct terminology?
Okay, um, I guess what we can do, how does this sound? Uh, Brian, myself and Zach will meet on Monday, Tuesday, Monday to set the agenda for the next meeting so we can discuss at that time, bringing it back at our next meeting in a format. We can maybe suggest a couple of different formats and let the board decide from that point forward.
Point of order?
Yes.
Uh, there's a motion on the table to table the motion. So do we, don't we need to vote on that right now?
On the original motion?
On tabling.
Tabling.
We have to vote on the tabling first.
And then the original motion will go on the next agenda.
If it passes.
If the table passes, yes.
Okay. Who is in support of tabling the motion? Raise your hand.
We need a majority, so I think we need to do a roll call vote, Nancy.
Or I'd ask her. Raise our hands. We could, we need five votes.
Roll call.
If you're in favor of tabling the motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, Patty?
Seven.
If you're against it, raise your hand.
Two. Seven to two tables.
So the motion passes, that we'll table the motion until the next meeting. Thank you, Byron.
Quick, um, just a reminder of the rules.
We need a motion.
We're past 10 o'clock.
To go beyond 10:00 PM. Do we have a motion to go beyond 10:00 PM?
To suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules to extend to.
Do we have a second?
10:30.
Wait a second. Okay, thank you, Tish. All in favor?
Roll call.
I think we could, I think we can put this on the next meeting stuff. I don't think we need to go.
Raise your hand if you're in favor of having the meeting go till 10:00. Go beyond 10:00.
Till 10:30.
Any against?
We need two thirds. Can we do that again? Because we need two thirds.
We need two thirds, Nancy, everybody.
We need two thirds?
Yes.
You need to suspend the rules. So your rules, the rules say that you, you're not going to run a meeting past 10 o'clock. You can suspend the rules with a two-thirds vote of the, of the group. And then you can move, you can, then you can continue.
All right, if you're in favor of having the meeting go beyond 10:00 PM, raise your hand, please.
A point of order, when, when Liz requests a roll call, I do think we, every member has a right to. So I think we should do it as a roll call.
This is a pretty simple vote.
I understand, but I'm just.
Roll call.
Liz Barrett.
No.
Tish Campbell.
Yes.
Nancy Claiberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
No.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
No.
Brian Mattow.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
The weather, guys. The weather, it's raining right now. I'm not sure.
What was the count?
Lisa, did you, did you vote?
No.
You're voting no?
I'm voting no.
One, two, three, four. It's five to four.
It doesn't pass. It doesn't pass. Okay.
Okay, the motion did not pass. We have, uh, before we do that, um, our next meeting will be, we always have to say what the next meeting is. January 24th, is that correct? Tuesday, January 24th is our next meeting.
Twenty-third, right? Twenty-third?
The 23rd.
This stays ninth.
Okay, Tuesday, the 23rd. And we will resume the agenda at that point.
And we, in between then, that's our next regularly scheduled quarterly meeting. Between then, we have.
We have a budget session.
Budget workshops.
Next Tuesday. Okay, is everybody all set? Thank you. That was, what is, is it Bato? Do we know?